Further discussion, corrections, questions? All in favor of approving the minutes from August 15? Any opposed? Abstentions? That's Ms. Ford and Mr. Rosnoy abstaining. Our next item is the minutes from September 5.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. The next item is the minutes from September 19. And I'll just give a quick update of that meeting, which was not a meeting. So the minutes are really not minutes. Chris Brestrop and I were here last week to continue the public hearings that were to be held that night. And we did so. I also signed three A and Rs and left two A and Rs for us to all look at tonight. So there's no need to approve these minutes. They just are what they are. As is our custom, we will begin our meeting with a report from the zoning subcommittee and discussion of the zoning amendments, including a public comment period. Someone from the -- Mr. Crowner?
Okay, so first of all, I guess I'd like to say that we have four public hearings tonight, or potentially four public hearings tonight. And these, the articles that we're going to be discussing and that we discussed today and last week, or two weeks ago, they arose out of a set of conditions that we're all very well aware of. And this is, this is one piece of a larger puzzle that we're working on, our section. We make no claims that this will solve all the problems, but we hope that it will at least help. In our discussions, we, we're going to make some recommendations, but our recommendations are not such that we think that the alternative is the wrong, necessarily the wrong way to go. It's that we need to make a recommendation, and this is the way we are proposing to go forward. But, but we are open to input from the larger board that might change the article and might result in a different recommendation to the town meeting. So we're grateful for the trust that you put in us, but respecting the discussion that we started having over the summer about a larger deliberating body. It makes a lot of sense to us, and I think, you know, we'll see how it goes. I will say that one of the things that we discussed, for those of you who read the papers, as Kenny pointed out, we did discuss Shell versus May extensively. And, and because it's important. And we are going to propose slightly different language than we have been working on previously. I mean, it changes every time. Our thinking changes, evolves. We've gotten excellent input from the public. I guess one thing that I will note is that the first article, the first residential article that we had proposed about adding language that all rental property should be registered, we're going to recommend that we withdraw that on the advice of town council. And I'll let Mr. Tucker explain why. That language is included in each of the residential articles that we have, and then it was a separate article as a catchall. We're concerned about grandfathering something and then, you know, not having any way to get rid of it. Grandfathering those who are not registered and allowing them to not be registered, essentially. About May versus Shell, there's a clause in, in single-family homes, in two-family homes, and also in converted dwellings that, that under previous drafts had said that the special permitting body may require onsite management or other professional management or something similar. We were persuaded, although not unanimously persuaded, that that actually should be a shell. We had, a very early draft had shell. We thought that maybe May allowed more flexibility. We have since been persuaded that the flexibility is built into the previous language that described a range of things ending with similar. And so we actually think that it is important to have some provision for management of a rental property as a shell. And the, and the special permitting board can decide, you know, how to apply that. What else? Oh, right. So, so one of the things that, that we've gone back and forth on over the course of our discussions is, is what body should be looking at applications for rentals of single-family homes and duplexes? We have site plan review, which is, which is our jurisdiction. And then we have homes that are similar in all respects, other than that they're not owner-occupied, that are, that would be reviewed by ZBA. There's a good reason to have one board look at all of those, whether they're owner-occupied or not, and then issue either a special permit, in some cases, or a site, a site plan review, in other cases. So I don't exactly know what the language will look like, but we're, what we're suggesting that, that actually it is a good idea for us to look at all of them. For, for two-family or single-family, whether it's a special permit for non-owner-occupied or site plan review for owner-occupied, it's a good idea for us to look at it so we know what, what the full range of, of applications are.
When you say us, do you, are you referring to the zoning board or the planning?
The planning board.
Okay.
I guess I'll, I'll discuss the specifics of each article as they come up for, for the public hearing, but that's in general what we talked about. We are not 100% committed to any of our positions, I think. But, but we do recognize that the public is, is asking for some sort of change. And, and we're trying to provide a responsible change, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. So thank you for reviewing the, the progress of the, of the zoning amendments. I will mention that we've received a letter from Attorney Farber, a letter from Cindy Jones, actually, and a letter from Steve Bloom, which we've all received, and thank you for those. Is there any questions or comment from the board on the zoning articles in general before we move through the specific ones in terms of public hearings? Does anyone from the public want to comment generally before they comment in the context of a specific public hearing? Any public comment at all? All right. In that case, I'm going to propose that we move immediately to the first public hearing. I was joking outside the town hall just now before the meeting, saying that our goal was to save as many people from watching the presidential debate as possible. Apparently, there's not a lot of people who are going to miss it, so we'll see if, we'll see how quickly we can get done here.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
I don't believe we can start the public hearing until we reach 7:30, so we might want to deal with other issues on the.
Actually, a further report. So one of the things that we did was, was we're actually going to introduce another article that we haven't talked about before. Sorry about that, but it's, it's not any new language. It's, it's breaking off the definitions from duplex. We, we had a two-part article for duplexes. One was the use chart, and one was a series of definitions. We kept adding to the definitions, not all of which had anything to do, really, with duplexes. So we, we decided to break off that and make that a separate article, definitions relating to residential use. So that, that public hearing will be in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Let's see what we can do. Ms. Brestrop, do we have any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to this meeting?
I don't believe so.
I believe we have some A and Rs we could do.
We have three A and Rs here. Two of them show a property being divided in two. One is 328 Lincoln Avenue. This property spans the land between McClure and Lincoln. It's up close to the university. The project or the, the proposal is to take some land from one of the properties and add it to another property. There are two properties involved. One of the properties has a single-family home on it, and the other property, I believe, has a duplex currently. But the amount of land that's taken from the first property and given to the second maintains the lot area that would allow a duplex on either property. So I will show you, I have a little map here from the GIS system showing where the property is located, and then I also have the A and R itself.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. And staff has reviewed this, this A and R proposal and determined that it meets all applicable frontage requirements? Is that correct?
That's correct.
For those watching at home, an A and R, what we're doing right now is to review plans that move lot lines but don't require a subdivision plan because each lot meets the applicable zoning requirements for access.
So what's changing is the lot line that is between the property that is shown in yellow on that plan and the property to the north of it. And I'll bring around the A and R plan and show it to you. I think the purpose of this is to make both lots conforming lots. The lot to the north is currently not conforming, so by adding this little piece of land to the lot to the north, it will become conforming because it will have 100 feet of frontage on McClure. Here it is, this little wedge is being added. There's a property line there. That's the new property line that's going to be added to this parcel and taken from this parcel.
Are these two separate owners?
They are two separate owners, but I, I understand they've made an agreement about this.
Is anyone present from either of the owners of these properties?
Here's the lot line that's being changed. Currently, it goes straight, and now it's going to dip down so that this property will have 100 feet of frontage on McClure, and this property will have 100 feet of frontage on Lincoln. Changing to allow this property to become conforming. So would you like to sign these later?
Yeah, I'll sign them later so that we can, why don't we see if we can't see another one now?
The second property is one that has gained some fame of late. It's a property 290 Lincoln Avenue. And there is a barn on the property that is being proposed to be taken down. There's a single-family house on the property, which is close to Lincoln Ave., and a barn in back of that. And you may have read about this in the paper. So I'll pass around this little GIS map here that shows where the property is. It's at the corner of Fearing and Lincoln, right there. And here's the house and the barn. And there's a parking lot back there. So the proposal here is to split that lot into two. And one of the lots is going to have frontage on Fearing, and the other one will have frontage on Lincoln. They both will have adequate lot area and adequate frontage, and they also will both have the building circle that's required. The building circle needs to be the diameter, of the building circle needs to be equal to the frontage that's required.
So are they proposing to put a new building on the new lot?
We do not have any information about what they're proposing.
And has, has the staff reviewed this A and R application and determined that it meets all applicable frontage requirements under the zoning bylaw?
Yes, that is the case. And the town engineer has also reviewed it. The town engineer always reviews all of these plans before they come to the planning board.
Is anyone here to speak to this?
Again, are these two different owners?
This is the same owner. Same owner owns this piece of land here, and he's proposing to cut it in two.
And there, that's the barn?
And that's the barn, yep. And what you're being asked to do, just so you're clear about this, I'm sure all of you are, but I'm, I'm just going to reiterate it. It's, when you endorse an A and R plan, really what you're doing is just saying that you agree that there is no requirement that this plan be brought to the subdivision, a subdivision application. There's no need for a subdivision application in this case because both lots have adequate lot area and frontage along a road, and they also have access. So that's what you're acknowledging. You're not agreeing with the plan. You're not, you know, approving the plan. You're just saying it doesn't require subdivision control.
And under the state law, if it does comply with those simple requirements, and if we, even if we decline to sign it, the plan will be deemed constructively approved, and it'll be the same as if we signed it.
That's correct.
Mr. O'Connor, did you want to speak to this briefly?
To the extent that, that you just, you know, maybe fair warning to subsequent petitioners appeared before you, that, that the demolition permit for this house was applied for on the grounds that it would be, that the space that would be gained by demolishing the barn would be used for the purpose of increasing the garden and lawn space, when in fact, it, given the, the circle that's on the new lot, it was really designed to allow the lot to be divided so, under the present zoning, a two-family structure could be, could be constructed within the building circle with a, without having the barn, you know, which the barn intrudes into. So I hope that, and the, the public hearing on the demolition took place on September 4. And as you may, somebody may have noted, or whoever's signing this may note, the plan was, was signed for the division of the lot was signed by the, the professional involved on September 5. So it's clear that the owner had one intention that he revealed to the zoning board of appeals or the historical commission and the building commissioner, and another that was his real intention. And I hope that, to the extent that you've, that somebody attempts to do that to this board, that you will find a way to make it clear that you will not tolerate that kind of behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Ms. Adams?
Maureen Adams, Precinct 10. This seems to me to be an example of the difficulty of jurisdictions when we're dealing with complex problems. The hearing before the historic commission has been contested by members who were not adequately informed of Butters, who weren't able to make the meeting. There is contestation about the historical nature of the brawn itself, as well as the house. That is one jurisdiction. With that having been, with the, with the demolition delay having been denied, it then comes to you as another jurisdiction with fairly narrow criteria. And it's very difficult for us as a Butters and neighbors to figure out where we can go to contest the demolition of a barn that is going to have significant impact on the noise, nuisance, and visual qualities of that area of Lincoln Avenue. This is an extremely serious issue for us, and we're caught between the different stools of different jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, as are we. Does anyone from the board want to comment on this? Way in at all? Yes, Ms. Kruger?
I'm, I'm very sympathetic with what the last two speakers brought up about this property, but even if there was a demolition delay in place, I think our hands would still be tied because the, the range of our authority on approval-not-required plans is simply to say whether a subdivision is required or not. So, right, right. So I just wanted to reiterate, and other, other people may, and I'm assuming you made the comments in a more general way, but I think clearly this is a neighborhood in transition, and we see that in many ways. So this is another indication of the pressure in, on this particular neighborhood. But we have a very, very limited role.
Agreed. Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
Just to add to that, I guess I would point out that the, the best place for people to bring concerns about what might happen there is when a project is proposed on the property. So if a duplex goes in there, or what, if a duplex were proposed to go in there, that would require, under our current zoning, it would require at least a site plan review before this board and a public hearing, which would be the opportunity for people to discuss that publicly. Actually, under the zoning that we're proposing to bring to Falltown Meeting, if that were to be a non-owner-occupied property, it would actually require a special permit from the zoning board, which is even harder to attain. So, so again, there would be the opportunity for discussion and public input into whatever is planned to be proposed on that property. But as Ms. Kruger and others have noted, our hands are tied with respect to this process because we are required by state law to rule just on the frontage and lot area and accessibility of the property.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Yeah, this is, we, we definitely recognize that this particular application is really at the center of the controversy that's going on, not just in your neighborhood, but in all many neighborhoods around town. And the, the, the issues that go along with student housing. And, you know, the, the division of the lot line in this case is a ministerial duty. We're really happy that you come, and we want to make sure that, you know, even on things that are, you know, that aren't really discretionary on our part, that we hear from the public what you think and, and from the board. So thank you very much for coming and speaking to this. Ms. Brestrop?
Do you want to look at the third A and R plan, or?
Was there, oh, let me just, I just need to ask, was there anyone on this board who sees any reason why we can't sign this particular application? Okay. So why don't we go ahead and see the third A and R before we go to our public hearing?
I have a plan here that shows this property as it currently exists, and you can pass it along. It's a property that is currently non-conforming. It does not have frontage on a road. It is a large piece of land that has a single-family home on it. And we are not certain how it got to its current situation, but the fact is, it does exist as a non-conforming, legally non-conforming lot. What is being proposed is that this lot be divided in three. One of the pieces would remain with the existing house on this lot. One of the pieces would be sold off to someone who owns property on Jenks Street in order to create a, a flag lot on Jenks Street. And the third piece would be attached to the property of the landowner, who currently owns the property, which is on Pelham Road. I think it's this piece here. Is that right? No, it's not. It's this piece here. I'll show you the, the map in a minute, but I just wanted to give you that background. We did get an email from Copelman and Page a while ago when this first came up, which told us that as long as the non-conforming lot is not made, being made more non-conforming, that you can go ahead and endorse this A and R plan. This lot is not being made more non-conforming, so therefore, I recommend that you endorse it. And I'll show it to you now.
So in this case, we actually have an opinion from town council that this meets the A and R requirements. Yes, Mr. Tucker?
The circumstance which created the current layout actually was a cer, a situation where one of the frontage properties on Pelham Road and the property on which the farmhouse sits in back was all one property. And there's a provision under state law, and this happened about 10 years ago, which allows you to divide a property, even if in the process you create a non-conformity, so that when you have two principal uses on a single property, you can divide it up so that they can occur on their own properties. It's more detailed than that, but that was a circumstance that led to the situation where we had a separate frontage lot on Pelham Road and a large back lot serving the farmhouse. What's happening now is that large property serving the farmhouse is being further subdivided and parceled out to adjacent properties without creating any further non-conformity.
So I'll bring the plan around now. This is the lot. And a piece of it, as I said, is being attached to the home lot of the woman who owns all of this land. She owns this property, and she owns this back lot. So she's taking a piece of the back lot and adding it to her own property. She's taking a piece of the back lot, and she's intending to sell that to someone who owns property on Jenks Street. And she's taking the rest of it and just leaving it alone with the existing farmhouse. This is where the owner lives. Here's the piece that she's attaching to her own property. Here's the piece that she's selling to become a, a flag lot. And this is the remaining piece.
So on the remaining piece is?
An existing house, yes.
But that, okay. Yikes. So this is not a building lot?
This is not a building lot. And this piece that will become part of a flag lot is also not a building lot because it doesn't have frontage on the street. This is becoming part of a lot. This is becoming part of a lot that already has a building on it.
There's being created another lot between that lot and Pelham Road.
This mark here indicates that these two lots are going to be combined.
So the existing farmhouse will be served by an easement over the existing?
That's correct.
I mean, the same easement will remain in place?
An easement, yes.
I see. So really what it does, it does create one additional building lot, which is going to be this flag lot off of Pelham Road?
Yeah, the flag lot is going to be here with the flag going off of Jenks Street.
Oh, I see.
Presumes a property transfer occurring.
Several months ago, you'd signed an A&R that carved out this little access strip for the flag lot. And now people are getting ready to purchase this piece, and they're going to be coming back to you with another A&R that shows the access strip and this piece combined. And then they'll have to go through the special permit process with the zoning board of appeals to have this recognized as a building lot. Okay?
Thank you.
Understand what's going on here. This is the piece that's going to remain with the house. This piece will be added to this parcel here where the owner lives currently, so this piece is going to get bigger. And then this piece will become part of a flag lot, which will be connected to Jenks Street. Okay? Yes, thank you.
I'm concerned that this is a series of A&Rs that really should have been approved under a subdivision plan, and that's being approved piecemeal by piecemeal by shuffling pieces around. Mr. Tucker?
Ordinarily, the subdivision plan requires, although not always, is involved where you are creating new roads, where you are creating new road frontage. And that's not the case here. What we have here is a vestigial situation with a large back lot, and the back lot is being divided up and being attached to existing adjacent properties. They're not creating brand-new building lots except for that one flag lot. And the flag lot will still have to receive a special permit, as would any flag lot when they go to cojoin the two. The, the strip that was described previously and the back lot that's now being created through this A&R process.
So when the ZBA hears this special permit, will be, will they be advised of the process by which the landowner created this lot?
Yeah. But you understand that the special permit that they would grant or not grant is the process by which the flag lot would become a building lot, and they don't have to grant it. It's a discretionary permit.
Ms. Brestrop?
So I did a little research into that because I was concerned about that myself, and it turns out that there is a definition of lot that is in state law, and it defines lot as a buildable lot. And in this case, lots are being created, but they're not buildable lots. And they're marked on the A&R plan as being not a buildable lot, not a separate buildable lot. So from my reading of the state law, this plan does not create two or more lots, buildable lots. So that's why it is an A&R and not a subdivision plan.
Thank you. Other comments from the board on this one? I'm not happy about it, but I'll, I guess we're going to endorse it. It is past 7:30, we'll begin our first public hearing. This is on converted dwellings. In accordance with the provisions of Section 5 and 11 of Chapter 48, this public hearing, these public hearings have been duly advertised, and notice thereof have been posted and mailed to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and Abudding Towns. These hearings are being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding these proposed amendments to the Amherst zoning bylaw/map. These amendments will be on the town meeting warrant for the fall special town meeting. Our 7:30 meeting is A-0513, Converted Dwellings. To amend Section 3.3241 and Article 12 definitions of the zoning bylaw, to clarify the definition of converted dwelling as a residential use category, to modify selected dimensional requirements for conversion of existing residential buildings and outbuildings, and to adjust permitting requirements for converted dwellings containing different numbers of dwelling Ms. Brestrop, maybe, I, I've never had one where I had two together like this. I assume that we're just doing them differently, and I'll read a separate preamble for each one. Or can I preamble them both together?
I think you should read the preamble at the time that the meeting is posted, or the public hearing is posted. So that one was for converted dwelling, and then you'll read it again for the single-family dwelling.
Okay. Thank you. We'll begin with a report from the zoning subcommittee, and then we'll hear comments from the board members, following which we'll hear comments from members of the public. Please, all speakers, ask to be recognized and identify yourself by street name and address, your name and street address. After we've heard testimony and discussion, we'll either continue the hearing to a date certain or move to close the hearing. We may then deliberate and vote our recommendation on the article. Mr. Crowder?
Okay, so this, this is a really complicated one. The reason for this article is because, as, as you know, a lot, a big problem is, is single-family homes being bought and then converted to duplexes or other uses. But it's not really clear what, at least in our current bylaw, it's not really clear what the difference between a converted dwelling is and a duplex. So we wanted to try and, and make it more clear, make, make it so that there actually is a distinction. You couldn't, it wouldn't be up to the applicant to decide, well, I want to apply for a duplex or I want to apply for a converted dwelling. You have to apply for what it actually is, if this were to pass. And so what we're suggesting that a converted dwelling is, is, is a structure that is essentially the same, but with no more than 20% of new addition or demolition and reconstruction, and up to 40% in, in certain other cases. And, and then, and then to change the use, the permitting standards under the use chart. So it's difficult to explain because it's, it's actually, it's hard to understand. We're trying to make it easier to understand. And I, I think it will be easier to understand once, once it's in place, but it's hard, it's hard to explain what is there now and what the changes are. So what's there now is, is that a converted dwelling is only allowed by special permit in, in the districts that it's allowed, which is most of the residential and business districts. But because of, because of the fact that most conversions are to, a dupe, from a single-family to a two-family, and we're also proposing to regulate two families under two different use categories, that is, owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, with two different permitting standards for those, we are, we are also attempting to reflect that difference in, in the new permitting standards for converted dwellings. As I said before, we are suggesting that the planning board should issue that permit, whether it's a site plan review for owner-occupied dwelling, or a special permit for a non-owner-occupied So, so the article would, would change the use chart a little bit, allowing, it would make the special permit by the planning board, as I understand it. And then in RVC and RG, the most dense residential districts, it would allow a, a site plan review, actually, I'm not sure. Please, please clarify.
This, if some of, if I may, some of this occurred during, some of the clarification occurred during the meeting of the subcommittee, and the language that would indicate this is not present in what's in front of you. So we're describing things in the air. I think that what we will end up with in terms of the permit pattern here, if you're looking at it, rather than there being a slash and an SPR with an asterisk, there will be a new line underneath the existing SP under RVC and RG, and it will be SPR/SPP with an asterisk. And then condition two, which currently describes only the circumstance where you're going from one to two units and are requiring site plan review with the presumption that anything with owner occupancy and the presumption that anything else would require a special permit, because of the subcommittee is recommending going to planning board special permit, we are going to add to that line the planning board special permit underneath. So it would be SPR/SPP with conversion, and there would be language added to condition number two to, to make that plain. The SP would remain in both cases, the existing one, for three or more units, conversions of three or more units in those zoning districts. Three units right now is the beginning threshold for apartments or townhouses where there is a presumption that there is not an owner occupant, and so we believe that the special permit is appropriate in that case. And part of what we're trying to do is make the regulation of one and two-unit, non-owner-occupied rental units consistent across the board, whether we're talking about single-family in a bit, two-family in a bit, or converted dwellings, so that it's always the same. It's special site plan review approval if it's a owner-occupied use, it's a special permit by the planning board, same permit body if it's non-owner-occupied. So I hope that clarifies it somewhat.
And then, and, and that's for the RVC and RG zoning districts?
That's correct.
And so then for those same uses in the other districts, you have potentially a special permit from the ZBA?
That's correct, which is the current circumstance. There isn't, there is a wrinkle in this. It's not really a wrinkle, but it might look like a wrinkle. Under number six, if you turn the page, there's an existing provision that says conversions may occur in one of two circumstances, but not both. Where you're going, conversions have to be located in an area that is close to heavily traveled streets, close to business, commercial, and educational districts, and/or developed for multifamily use. That describes well the RG and RVC districts, or by implication in the less dense outlying districts. It shall be only from one to two units, one of which shall be and shall remain owner-occupied, which will be made of a condition of any special permit issued in such an instance. And in that case, we're talking about the outlying districts, the regulation in, the permit line here is ZBA special permit, and it would be ZBA special permit there as well. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So if I were to ask the question, does this proposed amendment make permitting a converted dwelling easier or harder? Which would it be? Yes?
May I, may I respond? If it is owner-occupied, and you're going from one to two units, in a couple of zoning districts, it's easier, or it's different than it was. It would be site plan review by the planning board, it would be by right because it's owner-occupied. In all other instances, it would be special permit, which is the same requirement that there is there now.
So, yeah, so, so the, the purpose of this, again, is, is to make a distinction between this kind of use and duplex use. It may not be the best way to make a distinction, as we'll discuss, as I will comment later. But, but this is, this is an attempt to, to make it so that everyone understands what the rules are. So we're also proposing to change some of the standards and conditions. I would direct your attention to number three, which the consensus of the, or the majority of the zoning subcommittee agreed with the language that, that is presented, the change. It's, it's really just clarification of what's there. However, we're asking the planning board to decide whether, at the bottom there, whether the number, total number of dwelling units shall not exceed six in RG, as it currently states, whether you think that should be four. In other words, move the RG up to the, the four line, to the RN, RORLD. It was not the recommendation of the, of the majority of the zoning subcommittee, but it's something that, that is still sort of open. The next significant change in the condition is number five, in which we discuss what a, what, under what conditions a, a building would be called a conversion. We're saying that no more than 20% new or demolition and reconstruction, except for some conditions. You can go up to 40% if it meets, we're suggesting two instead of, as it says, three, of the, of the conditions that are listed A, B, C, D, E. Because these are, these are goals that are, that are important to, to promote and, and to not allow them because doing so would, would take up more than 20% of a new struck, of a converted structure, we think is, is hindering it too much. So right now, a converted, converted dwelling could consist of a detached structure from, from the main unit, from the main structure. And it's confusing about what the standard is. Right now, it says unless the exterior footprint is 500 square feet. But it's not clear whether that's 500 square feet before or after the conversion. And it's also not necessarily a good idea to base it on the footprint. We think that, that perhaps it should be based on, on, on the resulting habitable space. So that's, so that's what we're suggesting. Change it to what results, and lower the, the threshold to 350 square feet of habitable Finally, number 13. This is the provision that, that discusses the permitting granting authority's ability to require management. We didn't actually discuss this because we sort of overlooked it, but, but this is an instance of, of may or shall. I think we might want to consider a shall there for the same reasons that, that, that we have already, the zoning subcommittee has already recommended a shall for single-family dwellings and duplexes. In other words, as a condition of the special permit, the permit granting authority shall require management of some sort, qualified professional property management, onsite resident manager, or something similar. It just seems like it's a good idea. That's what people want. It's not too inflexible, we think, majority, not necessarily all of us. And again, this is something that, that we're sort of on the edge of, of, you know, what exactly is the right thing to do. So we're, we're making a proposal, this is our proposal, and, and we want the board to consider that, whether, whether we're making the right decision. Finally, there's a second part, and that is amendment to the definition of converted dwelling. It, it's- It's, it basically flushes out what is now sort of a bare-bones definition, and it, and it talks about a converted dwelling being one that creates new units. So, I guess there are probably many questions, and we'll attempt to answer them.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Crowder. Mr. O'Keefe?
I just have a real quick question to lead off about that definition that you just mentioned. You mentioned earlier the possibility of a separate article containing definitions. Would that apply here as well, or is this one meant to be attached to this particular article?
Yeah, so this, this one is meant to be attached, stay attached because it is, it actually directly relates to the main article. The reason we broke off the definitions from duplexes is because we were adding, when we came up with new things that needed defining, we were adding them to, to one single article, and it got to be the case that they didn't all really apply to that article. So, we're only breaking off the ones that don't apply to the, to the article. This one applies, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. I think this is as good a time as any to talk about the deletion of the rental registration requirement. It, at the beginning of the meeting, for those of you who weren't here, it was briefly mentioned that the, that's the amendment, or rather, the article that we were going to propose about the rental property registration amendments to the zoning bylaw are not recommended by town council. I'd welcome a comment from someone who knows more about this. Mr. Tucker?
I had a brief conversation, well, 45-minute conversation, with the town council this afternoon, speaking to a number of, but not all, of the amendments. He's still wading his way through it. In this one in particular, he was concerned that the process of making this part of the zoning, as opposed to rental regulation, or through the Board of Health, or in the general bylaw, could create an entire class of non-conforming uses that were grandfathered. They hadn't registered, and because they were grandfathered, they didn't have to afterwards. And to avoid getting into that circumstance, he thought that the requirement for registration should be instead included in the rental regulations in the spring, rather than in the zoning itself.
So, for those of you who are maybe new to zoning issues, when a town changes a zoning bylaw, existing uses that are, that become non-conforming because of the amended zoning, retain what's called, well, they're considered pre-existing non-conforming uses. In English, that's grandfathering. In other words, if you have, if you're allowed to have a 100-foot driveway under the old bylaw, and the new bylaw says you have to have a 200-foot driveway, your old 100-foot driveway would still be legal because it was okay before they changed the law. So, I think that if anybody's not clear on this, it makes perfect sense to me because zoning is a different creature from the general bylaw that's being proposed. Does anyone have any questions about that from the board? That particular piece of it? Because that's going to come up in each of these that we address tonight. Mr. O'Keefe?
I do have a question about that, and I guess I don't really understand the ruling from town council on that. My understanding was that the logic behind requiring the registration in the zoning, what we were proposing to require in the zoning was basically a requirement that you follow the general bylaw or the regulation that exists for the town. And my understanding that the reason that we were doing that was so that failure to do so could be treated as a violation of the zoning bylaw subject to the enforcement mechanism of the zoning bylaw, which allows fines of up to $100 per day for each instance. And, and obviously, town council knows a lot more about this than I do. But I fail to see how language in the zoning bylaw that says you need to abide by the town's general bylaw on rental regulation, I fail to see how being grandfathered under the zoning bylaw would relieve one of the obligation to follow a general bylaw that was on the books.
Mr. Tucker?
First, the current rental registration is a Board of Health regulation, but it's a distinction without a difference. The situation is that now, although a property may be in violation of the Board of Health regulations, they're not in violation of the zoning bylaw. And if we create a new zoning regulation that says you have to do something different than you used to be required or not required to do under zoning, as opposed to under Board of Health regulations, then the previous circumstance, there was nothing illegal about an unregistered rental unit under the zoning. It's just illegal under the Board of Health regulations. So, it was legal under the zoning. If you change the rules, that previously legal, what, scoff law use under Board of Health regulations is grandfathered under zoning. Does that, am I making sense, or mixing and matching too much here?
So, you're saying that they could use, you could use the zoning as a defense to the general bylaw, saying you were already allowed to do that?
No, you couldn't say, I mean, if the general bylaw comes along and says something different, then the general bylaw applies. The circumstances are that between now and whenever you adopt a general bylaw, at which point, during that period, only the zoning would apply. The zoning would have created all of those currently, or previously non-conforming units as grandfathered, and then you'd have two sets of competing regulations. Under the zoning, they would still be grandfathered, even though if they had previously existed, they would be grandfathered, even though general bylaws came along. The two operate in parallel and in separate tracks. You can't use one to be the other. You can refer to it. You can say you need to comply with it. But that only, in zoning, that only takes effect as of the date of adoption of the zoning bylaw itself, the new amendment. And anything borrowed of that is grandfathered.
And this is just coming up today?
This came up this, this afternoon at 3:00.
Mr. Kruger?
I mean, it certainly points to a kind of bizarre universe that we live in. People like, but given that there might even be a possible legal risk of creating a grandfathering, and I'm not sure 100%, and I'm perfectly happy to maybe disagree with council from time to time, it seems like we don't gain much by putting it in right now, and we could lose something where we challenged, and we could put this in, in the spring when we have, or whenever we have that other general bylaw. And so, I think it's not worth taking the risk, although it's hard to swallow.
I wonder if now that, you know, we, we recently came across something else like this, which was, we were talking about amending the planning board rules and regulations to include similar language. And we ended up not getting through the discussion about amending the rules, and we never did it. But what we did was to make staff aware that anytime a site plan review came before us, that we would be requiring a copy of the lease, right? So that we, so that anything that comes before us at least has been vetted in that way. It occurs to me that maybe the better way to handle this in light of Mr. Bard's opinion on this is to rely on staff to police the Board of Health, current Board of Health permit requirements anytime we have a formation of a, of a multi-unit dwelling of any kind. Mr. Tucker?
It was, in fact, town council's recommendation that instead of passing the zoning amendment, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals simply adopt the practice of regularly making this a permit condition between, you know, henceforth, which is not subject to grandfathering at all. That's a response to a specific application.
So, to add it to our standard list of conditions that Ms. Brester has been faithfully reciting for so many years now?
Expanding the recitation, that's right.
Going to add a new one? Does that seem reasonable to everyone? All right, so I'll, I'll bring it up in future when we discuss the further amendments, but we won't need to have any further discussion about it. At that time, we can concentrate on the meat of those amendments. Okay, further comments or questions from the board about the remainder of this proposed article? Ms. Brester?
I just wanted to go back to rental registration for a minute because on September 5th, you did recommend that it be sent on to town meeting with the recommendation that it be passed. So, you might want to revisit that vote if you're changing your mind at this point.
We can't do it right now because we're in the public hearing, but you're right, we do need to bring that up under not reasonably anticipated. All right, and at this time, I'll open up to comments from the public about the converted dwelling amendment. Yes? Please come forward, identify yourself, tell us where you live.
My name is Elisa Rubenstein, and I live at 38 Fearing Street. And I guess I'm following up on your question, Mr. Weber, about is this going to make the permitting process going from SP in RG district to SPP or SPR easier or harder? And so, what concerns me, having just witnessed a site plan review process, I really want to know what SPP means. And because from the SPR point of view, I, I felt helpless. Like there were, there was no public hearing. I'm just going by the ZBA hearings, and I know all three members have to agree. There's a public hearing for abutters, and they are guided by Section 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, and all the various provisions under that, which are, are many, including proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed, compatible with existing uses, would not constitute a nuisance, would not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters, et cetera. So, what is the SPP going to do? What, how is it different from the ZBA hearing?
It's not. It's the same.
So, how many members are on the SPP, and do they all have to agree?
Mr. Tucker? Do you, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, I do. I thought Mr. Schreiber was going to answer it. A special permit vote by the planning board requires a supermajority of the nine members, and a minimum, no matter how many members are present, of six voting in favor.
So, out of the nine, six have to agree?
Even, even if there are only six people present, which sometimes occurs.
And as far as a time for public comment?
If I may, it is a public hearing. There is notification of abutters. It's an identical process. In fact, frankly, the site plan review approval process is identical. There's notification of abutters. There's a public hearing. The difference, the frustrating difference, for those who are concerned about a proposal under site plan reviews, the site plan reviewer presumes that the use is by right. And then, rather than saying whether the use can happen, the board is saying how the use can happen, and may put conditions on it. So, in this case, we're talking about going for owner-occupied uses to site plan review by right, saying how it, how it occurs, putting on whatever conditions are appropriate. For non-owner-occupied uses, single-family or duplex, as we'll, or convert, or two-unit converted dwelling, special permit within which the board can say no.
So, I mean, I'll ask, answer another question, too, that, that you sort of asked. I think the period for comment, public comment is largely in the discretion of the chair of the meeting. So, in the, you know, in my mind, a special permit hearing before the planning board would be a very similar process to what we have under site plan review.
Then, why not just, if it's so similar, why not just continue with the ZBA and have consistency?
Mr. Crowder?
Actually, that, so that's a good question. And, and we actually are suggesting consistency of review of duplexes, or consistency of review of single-family homes by one board, whether it's site plan review or special permit.
But what you have here, not only in this converted, but in the single-family dwellings and in the two-family, is changing things to SPP. That's what was done at the ZIA, your subcommittee. And it has me living in what was termed as a neighborhood in transition, very nervous. And I, I do not want to see my neighborhood labeled as in transition. I would like to see that RG neighborhood being fought for as a sustainable family neighborhood. And I want it to be as hard as it can be for what is happening now to happen. And I am very worried about this, about looking at RN. It's going to be a special permit, zoning board of appeals. RG, no, it's different. And I think that's an, maybe an old concept, given the reality of what is happening now. Because two of the houses that were purchased this summer have come before you today to be, have the boundaries changed and the borders changed. And I just feel like it's happening too easily. And it's a trend where some of these people have very large plans. And down the road, they are amassing property. It's like Monopoly game. And it's happening right now. And that's why I have this concern about dividing between two boards about the permitting system. And that's what I hope you will consider as you go forward and look at the single-family dwelling and the two-family. Because RG was changed in all those situations from SP to SPP.
Thank you, Ms. Rubenstein. Mr. Schreiber?
So, if I could say a couple of things. One is the alphabet soup. So, A and R, SP, SPP, SPR. Took me forever to figure out all this. But what we did today was A and R approval not required, which is a state law, which allows a subdivision of land. So, I think that's what you were referring to, and you said there's no, there was no hearing. But the, you know, we're bound by that particular state law, which is, frankly, it's a Massachusetts quirk. But there, you know, many other states would, in fact, require a public hearing for, you know, what we have to do by endorsement. But, so the other thing is the SP and the SPP. So, those are, as was said, those are both not by right. Those are discretionary. So, their difference is that SP goes to the zoning board. SPP stays here at the planning board. I think what we're trying to avoid, and site plan review is by right, and that always goes to the planning board. What we're trying to avoid is the mom said, dad said. So, in other words, if you start to have two different boards here, in some ways, there's hair splitting, owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied. But somebody could game the system and try to find an easier path. So, in other words, they might say that, think that it's an easier path to get three people to agree to a site plan rather than, you know, the six, the six people on the planning board. So, they might say, well, it's not going to be owner-occupied. Go through what they see as an easier process to get a.
My experience has been absolutely the opposite.
Possibly, but we don't know. So, in other words, really what we're trying to do is get the same body to hear both circumstances, the owner-occupied and the non-owner-occupied. So, that's the SPP?
I don't, I don't understand because if all these went to the zoning board of appeals, it would be the same body hearing it.
No, because SPR always goes to the planning board, so.
I guess that's one of my concerns. My concern is that RG, which I feel is an endangered species, should have as tight requirements as RN because of the realities of how Amherst is changing. And maybe in another town, it would be fine, but in Amherst, these houses are being bought for speculation and commercial use. So that's, that's the point I wanted to make.
So just to continue on that thread, whether for better or worse, duplexes are allowed as SPRs, site plan review in RG districts right now, so that exists now. So basically, we already, owners of a house, single-family house that are considering converting into a duplex, already can go in through the SPR, so they don't have to go in through the converted dwelling route. So that's another...
Actually, I was at a hearing where a house was divided into two apartments, and that was at the zoning board of appeal.
And I'm getting above my pay grade, but I believe that was because of a non-conformity.
Okay, that's true.
I think, if I may just, this may clarify it, I hope it does. What we're talking about is the regulation of two-unit dwellings, whatever it is, whether it's a duplex falls into the duplex category or falls into the converted dwelling category, and the distinction between owner occupied and non-owner occupied. Non-owner occupied is consistently in both the existing, except in the proposals, planning board amendments, non-owner occupied is consistently by special permit. The distinction is that the zoning subcommittee has recommended to the planning board, which will consider this tonight and in this hearing and a subsequent hearing, whether or not that it makes more or less sense to have the same body issuing a permit for two-unit dwellings, whether it's non-owner, whether it's owner occupied or non-owner occupied, whether you want to have two different bodies doing that. The proposal under two-family dwelling will, is proposing to change, and we'll see what this board does and what town meeting does, as was proposed a year, more than a year ago now, to change the duplexes in the RG district from site plan review back to special permit. What they're saying is it's planning board special permit. A special permit is a special permit is a special permit. Same process, same criteria, same findings must be made, same process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubenstein. Yes, Ms. Adams?
Maureen Adams, fourteen Beston Street. Let me just simply comment first on the SPP. I think the key thing for us, as we come before you as petitioners on these various conversions, or whatever they might be, is the vigorous utilization of ten point three eight. That's what is really key. That's what has won our hearts with the ZBA, and it will win our hearts again if you vigorously apply that with, from the planning board. I don't think I'm so concerned who does it, I'm simply concerned that the fairly superficial external criteria used for site plan review does not address the usage concerns that we're so concerned about, and ten point three eight really does address those. So that's really my comment there, and beyond that, it's a judgment call. The second issue I'd like to raise is with item three. I vigorously protest the six units in RG. I urge with my, with the previous speaker, that RG really be considered more in line with RN, in that they are both residential neighborhoods, there might be different lot size, but it's the very fact of the smaller lot size in RG that makes it so unwise to have four or more units, four unrelated students each, in relatively small houses with not very large driveways, separated by trees that then get cut down, as we noticed, to make large enough parking lots. So with the increase in the number of units in an area that is already crowded, we are urging that it not be slated for further overcrowding and further transition, but that rather we protect the student rentals who are there that do not exceed the number of units, and not to increase the number of units to six in the RG. So I strongly urge that you reduce that six in item number three to four, at the maximum. The following, the final one is item thirteen. I just want to speak to our favorite English-lit discussion here, which has to do with Shaw and May. The reason, and I don't mean to be a laughingstock of the public on this, but the term is extremely important, and I simply want to urge that some management shall be a criterion in the discussion of the special permitting authority, so that May had seemed so slippery to me and so slipshod that I felt that I had to urge Shaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. O'Connor?
I have a number of comments about the bylaw proposal, and then I want to precede them by answering some questions that have been asked previously.
If you could keep it to five minutes, please, Mr. O'Connor, we have a lot to get through tonight.
I understand, but it's a very complicated bylaw, and I think you would prefer to hear it tonight rather than have me explain it to people on the telephone before town meeting.
I just ask that you be concise.
I think I have...
Perhaps they're not helpful, Mr. O'Connor.
I think I will speak to the issue. I will be speaking to the issue at all times, okay? First, I think that if we want to accomplish something useful about the converted dwelling bylaw, that, and because the warrant will not be signed for at least a week or two, I'd strongly recommend that some members of the zoning subcommittee meet with people in the affected areas, particularly the ones that are going to go from special permit to site plan review, and discuss how to combine the best features of the petition article with this proposal. Because I think absent that, both proposals will fail. But I certainly think, quite frankly, that the proposal that provides more restriction will have a better chance than this one. And certainly, in terms of having a less complicated bylaw, and one where there is a consistent body hearing it, I would just urge you to really consider leaving it in the hands of the zoning board of appeals. In terms of management, I think that the petition proposal has, addresses issues both of affordability and management. If the town wants to encourage the neighborhoods around the university to house more students, there is a clear and simple way to do it which will make it much more acceptable, and that is to provide that in every case where single-family homes are being converted to multifamily use, that there be owner occupancy, because it builds on the principle that the university applies to controlling student behavior, and the principle is adult supervision. And an owner occupancy require, requirement is exactly that. So I would, I would say that that is where we could come together. If, the other issue is affordability, if we want to provide that people who work here in town, who work at the university can afford to live here and don't have to be commuting for a half hour to forty-five minutes, then one of the ways to do that is to create a situation through an owner occupancy requirement that, that essentially allows families to compete with the purchase of single-family homes with people who are buying them for speculative, commercial housing purposes. And I think the way to do that is through the owner occupancy requirement. That puts families, gives families a leg up in the process, and that's what I think we ought to be strengthening neighborhoods by giving families a leg up on purchasing single-family homes that come in the market, not in fact creating more incentive for speculation. So I, I think that, that the draft has some good provisions in it that address issues of dropping down an entire new structure on a property and calling it a duplex. And I think that by combining the best features, the one that, the ones that address control, onsite control, and affordability, that, that we could probably develop a bylaw that would have a chance of passing, that could get the support of the planning board and also of the community. But I, I don't see any purpose in going forward with something that reduces the requirement in, you know, riding in, essentially into the valley of death on this issue. And I would certainly hope that on the, on the definition, to the extent that you, you know, we do that, we separate it out, so that if you're trying to accomplish something useful with the definition, that we allow it to be accomplished, notwithstanding what happens to the bylaw generally. I think there are some good things in both proposals, and I think that the only way that we are going to help this community is by sitting down before the warrant is signed and developing a proposal that will meet the requirements of, you know, increased density, but onsite supervision and providing families a leg up so that we have, we can do affordability. If you have, you, families cannot compete in a situation where advantage is being given to commercial speculators, and I don't think that's what we want for this town, we certainly should, and we shouldn't facilitate it. So specifics of the proposal, I, you know, I think, I really think this should, I'd be happy, and I think people in the community would be happy to sit down with members of the zoning subcommittee at the earliest possible opportunity, and, and to speak with, with them about how to make this work and how to make sure we come out of something, out of this with something that will benefit the community, and, and put some controls on the out-of-control behavior that we see going on. We can't make it easier for things to get out of control. We need to make it more difficult, we need to address affordability, and, and we need to, to address greater density, but in a way that will be acceptable to the community and to the neighborhoods that will be affected. And that, the only way we can do that is through negotiation and through sitting down with the people who are going to make the recommendation to the planning board and, and to the town meeting. And I'm, I'd be happy to be involved in it, but I think if that isn't done, we're just going to have another round of failure at town meeting. And certainly, some of the components of this are, are just really inviting failure. So, thank you very much, and I'll have some comments on the succeeding articles.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor. I think we've heard a lot of good comments about this. Any, anyone else from the public want to comment at the moment? Yes, sir?
Greg Stutzman, thirteen twenty-five Southeast Street.
Could you, could you speak again into the mic, please?
Sure. Greg Stutzman, thirteen twenty-five Southeast Street. I was just sensing some confusion on the difference between the converted dwellings and, say, duplex. I'm wondering if there's precedent in the zoning bylaw for other use categories that as part of their definition are predicated on what existed prior or the process through which that use came to be?
Mr. Tucker?
I'm still trying to figure out the question, but that's what grandfathering does, in part. It says that any use that was legally in existence as of the time of the adoption of zoning can continue to exist as long as it does not cease for a period of more than two years and so forth, and that freezes...
Mr. Tucker, I'll, I'll stop you. I think his question, if I may just chime in, is about the fact that we're talking about the conversion of a dwelling, which is more of a process than, say, building a new duplex or creation of a new single-family dwelling or apartment building. We're talking about something that was something and now is going to be something else.
Right.
I think that's what he's talking about.
Perhaps Mr. Schreiber can speak to that, he did so during the zoning subcommittee meeting.
So I actually looked into this exact question, and the converted, as far as I can tell through the magic of Google, converted dwelling appeared in model zoning codes around World War II as a way of, in fact, preserving historic houses that were built too large for modern use, so basically what might be known as white elephants. So communities were quite concerned that these very large houses that were, had to be used for single-family that was not economically viable, so these houses were being abandoned. So this converted dwelling idea sprung up around, I think it's around the nineteen thirties, nineteen forties, as a way of bringing economic vitality back to this, to those kinds of communities. So a very common provision is that the houses had to have existed before, you know, choose a date, so oftentimes, ten years or more before that particular provision was adopted. So is that, that's kind of your question?
Well, I think you gave a little bit more history of other communities and why they implemented a converted use category, but I guess I was saying, are there other examples of use categories in our zoning or anyone else's that are predicated on the history of the property and not on what is intended?
So like, are you talking about like the nineteen sixty part and, no, because...
Well, the conversion implies that you're referencing what is being converted from and to, and are there any other use categories that say, we're going from something to something and we're going to regulate based on that?
Mr. Crowner?
This is an excellent point, and actually, I discussed this at the zoning subcommittee. What we're talking about is a use that existed before, say, single-family home, and then it's being converted to a new use. So why is conversion a use? Conversion is actually a method, as somebody said. And so I think ideally, I personally would like to see conversions taken out of the use chart and put somewhere else in the bylaw. And then we, then we're talking about, we have a single-family home, we have to go through this conversion part of the bylaw, but it results in a new use, a duplex or whatever. However, that's not before us now. What's before us now is, is an existing use category called conversion, converted dwelling. And, you know, we're trying to make it better than it is, and, and, you know, people may disagree, but we think, the zoning subcommittee, that is, thinks that what we have before us is, is better than it was before, and we should continue to work on it in the future and, and change it more.
Does, and I'll just, I'm going to take a step back to, yeah, why don't I hear from Mr. Tucker first?
Part of what, and in some ways, it's hard to talk about the converted dwelling without also talking about the two-family dwelling amendment, because the two are sort of responding to each other. Part of what we're trying to do with this is to clarify and distinguish between the two. And in this case, what we're saying that a converted dwelling use is, is a, two or more essentially dwelling units created in previously existing buildings, predominantly in previously existing buildings, that has the effect of, in some ways, preserving historic fabric, preserving the appearance and scale of a neighborhood, the limitations that are built into this, say, say, basically, no more than twenty percent of the resulting total habitable space can be the result of new construction or demolition and reconstruction. So it's sort of casting a net around the, the existing situation, saying it's not going to change much unless it meets one of, one of five, or, excuse me, two out of five criteria that are fairly high bars to meet, in which case you can get up to forty percent. The difference is, under two-family dwelling, which we'll be talking about in a bit, so we'll repeat ourselves, the definition would change from anything that has two units in it, which is fundamentally what it says now, which allows applic- it, which is fundamentally what it says now, which allows applicants to choose, do I want a duplex, which is by site plan review in, in this district, or do I want a converted dwelling, which is by special permit? Hmm.
I guess I understand what the board's trying to do there in distinguishing the two categories, but I guess my fundamental question remains about, is the conversion really a use or is it some other part of the process?
It is, it is a result of a process.
Are there other use categories that are a result of a process by definition?
Not yet, but we're getting there. We have a number of circumstances in the bylaw into which we have injected historical considerations. And we also regulate those under, separately under historic districts and things like that.
So it's probably a question beyond the scope of the conversation today, but I would be curious to see what the history was, both of the examples Mr. Schreiber mentioned about other communities implementing the converted use, converted dwelling zoning category, and other zoning uses that attempted to use history as part of their definition and how those have been defensible or implemented.
Well, if I may, for instance, and we're getting, I don't want to go too far off here. The inn, the use category of inn is defined as being in a historic building of 75 years or more in age.
Are the use category of inn?
Inn, I-N-N, as opposed to hotel or motel. In order for it to be an inn, it has to be in a, in a historic building. On the back, there is a summary of Amerist's history of the regulation of converted dwellings. And as, as per Mr. Schreiber's description, it appears sometime between 1940 and 1958, which is the time period he mentioned.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Sticeman. A good point made. Any other comments from the public? Mr. O'Connor, quickly?
So with respect to the specific section, I should let you know that the proposed section nine, the changes to 350 square feet of habitable space from 500 square, 500 feet, Ms. Krueger probably was a member of the staff at the time, but I, I can tell you that this, the 500-feet conversion thing was allowed because I, I petitioned to do it after a planning board article had failed, partly because the planning board had not done sufficient research. I researched every outbuilding in precincts 10 and 9 and compiled a list of them and, and, and the, what the assessor said was the square footage, the external square footage, and provided copies of the same to the members of the town meeting in those precincts and, and the other adjoining precincts four and five, and, and also did it for some parts of four and five as well. And that, and managed to persuade at least a couple of landlords to sit silently during the discussion. And the change happened by three votes. I can pretty much guarantee you that 300, 350 habitable square feet, especially since that's not the footprint, so you could have a two, a two-story structure that had, you know, that, that would maybe have 200, you know, be essentially a garage that could be extended to be, it was really, it was a great struggle to put this into, allow historic barns and other structures to be kept and used rather than demolished. And that's why I did it. And I just, I don't see that this is going to, that this is going to fly. And I just, I would urge you to strike it from any proposal that you make, which is why I said previously that, that I think it'd be useful for people who are concerned about this and the members of the zoning subcommittee to sit down and discuss this proposal, so that we might be able to arrive at something that would benefit the town and have a chance of passing at town meeting. So, again, I think this is another instance of that. And the other issue, of course, is number 13, which talks about qualified management. I think that, given the presentation of, of Dr. Carlstrom, who's the chair of the Biology Department at UMass, regarding unsupervised multifamily houses or even single-family houses, and the activities that occur there versus the activities of properties that have onsite supervision by owner occupants, that I think pretty convincing evidence that we need to go in the direction of, of not just professional management, but owner occupancy for both supervision and affordability. And I just would urge the board to, to try to work something out that will benefit the town. And I, I sense in the members of the zoning subcommittee, just in their posture toward interacting with members of the community, that, that they, that it would certainly be possible to work something out. And that's why I make the proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Yes, Mr. Schreiber.
Mr. Krueger, can I?
Yeah.
Can you, I didn't get the point about the 500-square feet. So are you, you're not in favor of 350-square feet, but you are?
Yeah, I'm not. I said that, that getting 500-square feet, allowing an outbuilding of 500-square feet to be converted took an enormous amount of research on my part and on, at my expense, and the, and a, the distribution of a very significant report that I prepared on every outbuilding in precinct 10 and 9, and in parts of four and five. And that, and the proposal to allow outbuildings to be created that have 500-square-feet external footage passed by three votes, by, had two-thirds plus three. So I, I just want to say it is, and I did it after the planning board article failed because they went on to other things, and I, I personally believe that the preservation of historic structures, especially some of the barns in the, in the area surrounding the downtown, was important. So, and, and I'm just saying, I think that going to 350, I think, gets you below the threshold by, at which you are going to be successful, especially since it's not external foot, but habitable space. I just urge you to delete that and just stick with what's there. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Schreiber? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Very helpful. Seeing no further hands in the public, I'll take questions and comments from the board. Mr. Rosnoy?
I have a question. Perhaps somebody can address how or whether the staff proposal for this zoning amendment relates to the petition for the similar zoning amendment for converted dwelling. Are we going to address that separately? Did zoning subcommittee address it as a part of the proposal that's before us and incorporate some of its provisions? I think we ought to let people know what's happening with that particular petition article.
Does, anyone from the zoning subcommittee want to comment on that? Yes?
So we, the deadline for petition articles was two weeks ago, I think. So we, we have not had a chance to look at them. I mean, we've read them privately, but we haven't had a chance to discuss them in public. We had already scheduled public hearings, as required, for, for these. I think that it's possible that, that there's, there's room for compromise on, on some issues, but I, I think there's, there's a fundamental difference in, in what the, the end goal is, 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 is for each, for the petition versus what, what the zoning subcommittee is proposing. And, and they've, and they've said it. I mean, they've said it, owner occupancy, period. And, and I think our sense was that, that's, that's probably a little bit too extreme. And so, so, you know, tweaking here and there, maybe, but, but I don't think that, that we have, we share the same end goal. So I'm not sure that, 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 that we would be able to come to a satisfactory resolution before October 9th or whatever the warrant is signed.
Mr. Tucker?
Very quickly, we have not had a chance yet to discuss this. We have not had a chance to discuss this with town council. But a quick scan of the petition article indicates that it does just a few things. It requires, as Mr. Crowner indicated, owner occupancy in all converted dwellings everywhere, no matter what. It makes a number of other largely sort of editorial changes to language. It requires that a landscape plan include screening of parking, that's already required in another section of the bylaw. And it adds a brand-new section which would mandate the nature and the timing of enforcement responses to a failure, to, or a violation of the owner occupancy requirement that it would impose. It is that section in particular that we're having town council take a look at. It appears that, in addition to taking some of the flexibility out of it, it doesn't give the enforcement officers the ability to say, well, if you don't do this, we're going to issue a cease and desist. It says thou shalt issue a cease and desist. And there are a number of similar things that, I'm not, I can't get into the details now because we haven't had a, that level of...
Well, I think it's useful, though, to have a, a summary of, I mean, we, and I probably should have mentioned this at the outset, that certain citizen petitions have been introduced, which are, which are alternatives to some of the articles that the zoning subcommittee is proposing, and are substantially different in a number of ways. And they're all available on the website for anyone who wants to review them. Ms. Krueger?
I just wanted to say, I think it is, in some ways, hard to take these in isolation, and we're not going to get to the petition articles really tonight because we have all these public hearings. But in, in my mind, we are making it more difficult to do conversions because we are adding some very specific requirements for owner occupancy that were not in the previous converted dwelling bylaw. So for me, that's making something more difficult, more stringent, more protective. I think the question is where we each fall on the spectrum of how far we want to go to make things more difficult. I'm someone who's been both a property owner and a renter over the course of my life, one and, and then the other, and then another. And I rented a, a home on Lincoln Avenue a short period, about 15 years ago. And if everything in town is owner occupied, as Mr. O'Connor said, it might change the affordability dynamic for homeownership, but it certainly changes the dynamic for being able to be a non-student renter. And I have some interest in protecting options for renters across a real spectrum. So I think we're looking at, in our own draft, how far we want to go with making owner occupancy a requirement and absolute in all circumstances or in some circumstances. And maybe if we can discuss that, we all probably have come to this from a different place, and we don't have an absolute, but we're going to be making a recommendation to town meeting on some version of this. And there has been a lot of input in public dialogue. There's always room for more. But I, I think as a zoning subcommittee, we're pretty close to at least moving on what we've worked on, and it does different things in the petition article. It lands on a different part of the spectrum of regulation.
If I may, I, I thank you for the substantive discussion on the petition article. Actually, it's more information than I was seeking. I was mostly concerned about the procedure. Is it correct to say that each of the petition articles will be reviewed by this board and separately presented to town meeting? I, I just wanted to make sure that there's clarity on that.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor made a, made a good point. I think that it might be useful to try to reach consensus between the two articles. And I hear, I've heard two of you say that that's not really a possibility. Is that the zoning subcommittee's general position on this, or?
Again, so any subgroup might reach consensus, but, but I think the board has made it clear that it wants to make a decision together. So, so it would have to be consensus of, of not just the petitioners, but, and the subcommittee, but of the whole board. So we're talking nine-plus, however many participated in a consensus-making body. I think, I think it's possible to make progress. I do think it's possible to make progress. But we're limited by time and, you know, and, and numbers.
So the, the question being, I guess, and this is more of a procedural question, too, along the lines of Mr. Rosnoy's asking, say, for the hypothetical purposes that we continued this hearing on converted dwellings, to hear, you know, and left it open until after we've heard the citizen petition article, would that give us room to create a, I don't know what they call it in Congress when the House and Senate agree on something?
Reconciliation. A marked-up bill.
Something that we can bring to town meeting that, that more people can agree to. Mr. Tucker?
What you can do is continue this public hearing to coincide with the time that the public hearing is being held on the petition article for converted dwelling, and discuss the two in tandem during that hearing, and then reach a conclusion afterwards. Similarly, with the two-family amendment. Chris will speak to the process.
Ms. Brester?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the public hearing for the citizen petition, I believe, isn't until November 7th. And the town meeting warrant is being signed by the select board on October 22nd. So after October 22nd, or really after a few days before October 22nd, you will not have an opportunity to change the language of anything. And right now, as of now, you don't have an opportunity to change the language of the citizen petition, because that's frozen once the citizen petition is submitted. So, you know, you have a certain, very limited amount of time. What you might consider doing is continuing this public hearing to next Wednesday night, the 10th of October, and having a discussion about it then, and inviting people back who are interested in talking about the citizen petition and the merits of that. And you can still have a chance to rework the wording of your, your article at that time and have this discussion. But after that point, there's really not too much room for changing anything.
Mr. O'Connor, did you have something you wanted to add about the procedure?
I think she offered you the, 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 what I would suggest.
Thank you.
You have 19 days. This is the 3rd, the 22nd that the warrant is signed. You have to, you have to attend to the town meeting on those days. And I, I think that you never know what you can agree on until you sit down and talk about it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board want to weigh in on this? Mr. Crowner?
Sorry for monopolizing, but it's clear, it was clear to me from reading the citizen petitions that the, their proposals for converted dwelling and duplex were meant to work together. That's also true to an extent for ours, maybe not to as great an extent. So, so working on converted dwellings implies to me that we would also be working on revising duplexes, at least, and possibly also single-family dwellings. So, yeah.
Ms. Brester?
I just wanted to point out another thing, that you already have four public hearings scheduled for the 17th of October. So it seems that if you really want to have a substantive discussion about this and perhaps duplexes, that you really might want to consider meeting on the 10th of October.
Does anyone, I'm going to narrow, narrow the discussion slightly. Does anyone on the planning board have, that's not a member of the zoning subcommittee, have any proposed revisions or concerns about the article that the zoning subcommittee is proposing? Mr. O'Keefe?
I do, but I'm happy to hold my thoughts on them, and if we're going to continue this until some point in the future.
We are running into a real-time problem here tonight. We have one, two, three, four more public hearings we're supposed to get through tonight. That is not going to happen. There, some of these are going to have to be continued. We simply don't have time to give these the time that they deserve. And the last one, which was supposed to start at 8:30... And the last one, which was supposed to start at 8:30, well, we knew it wouldn't really start then, but is the approval for the parking lot behind this building. I see that as a priority. For one thing, we're on, at the end of the allowable time for hearing the site plan review on this, and it was already postponed once. I would propose that, I don't know, what's the, I guess, on the, let's take a straw poll on the, on the planning board, if you're willing, ready, willing, and able to show up next Wednesday night at 7 o'clock to have an extra meeting due to our workload. One, two, three, four, five.
I'll be out of town.
I'll be out of town, out of town, out of town.
I mean, we schedule, I preserve the scheduled nights, and then I plan other things that I have to do on the non-planning board, so it's very hard.
You have a life.
Some days.
Well, the, we're restricted also by the sort of very time, the timeline of town meeting, which is apparently very strict, I have learned. So I guess we have two choices, really. We can continue this to the 17th, because it sounds like the next, next week doesn't work for enough people. We can continue this till the 17th, or we can come to an immediate vote.
I'd propose the latter, immediate vote.
I don't feel ready to vote. I would like to discuss it at a future meeting.
Anyone else?
And what is the immediate vote on?
Would be, well, I'm not making the motion, but it would be to whether or not to recommend this article as proposed to town meeting.
Okay.
Mr. O'Keefe?
I'm not ready to recommend it in its current form.
I'm not either.
See the majority quickly slipping away.
I have too many concerns about it, and the getting into the details is, I mean, we can, we can spend more time on this tonight and try and get at least this one done, I guess.
If I might, if the board could give some guidance on the couple of points that are sticking points, the may and shall, the special permit planning board, or special permit zoning board, because what's going to happen is you're going to get another draft, another version, and I'm a little worried that continuing on and continuing on, we're going to have this conversation over and over, and I'm not sure how much is going to shift. I mean, maybe there'll be some new people then reach consensus with, but I'm just worried we're going to spend another hour and another hour in at some point.
Before I get to you, Mr. Tucker, that's a very good point, Ms. Kruger. And so, Mr. O'Keefe, did you want to just tell us your specific concerns?
Sure, Ms. Kruger just enumerated them. The special permit for the planning board, I don't support that. I'd rather see it as a special permit by the ZBA. And I do think that the services of a professional property manager should be required and not just optional.
I agree with you, Mr. O'Keefe. And I would even go further. I would propose leaving the use table as it stands. I wouldn't change the use table at all. I would, in section three, I would move the RG to the four total dwelling units to make it more in line with RN. And I would also agree with your statement that you needed, I mean, I'm almost ready to say an onsite resident, a resident manager in any such use.
Could I ask a quick question on that? Are we moving into discussion about this?
Well, it doesn't make sense to stop at this point before we give the zoning subcommittee some guidance.
Sure. So my quick question about the onsite property manager, particularly in the case of a property with two units, is, does that necessarily consume one of the two units, or are there provisions for supplementary apartment or something like that for an onsite property manager? Like, I can picture how that works in a larger apartment building, but for a duplex or a building that only has two or three units, I'm having a hard time seeing how you can have a proper onsite property manager and still have a meaningful duplex.
Mr. Schreiber?
I think the assumption would be that one of the residents would be deputized as property manager, in the same way that any homeowner is a property manager, or any renter of a single-family house is a property manager of that house.
Wouldn't that just create an option for someone to designate one of the tenants as a de facto property manager without actually assigning them any duties?
I think that we would look for that in the lease and through the management plan, that that is the case. So in other words, then there's at least something written that gives, gives the zoning enforcement officer something to work with.
If I may, just from a procedural and scheduling standpoint, one of the things that has been a feature of your agendas through the summer is, starting at 7:05, after you've dealt with the minutes, you go for 45 minutes, or however long it takes, to talk about what the zoning subcommittee has been doing in developing these. If we're in, predominantly in public hearings about these now, you could combine those two functions. You could continue the public hearings to 7:05 on the evenings, evening, for instance, of the 17th, for at least one, possibly two of these amendments, and thereby fit them all in. But we will have to be fairly draconian about the public hearing part of it thereafter.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Tucker. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I was wondering if we could hammer out where the majority of the board was on each of those points, and maybe we could come to a vote tonight. Because I'd be willing, you know, we have the same, it's not even a split, the same spectrum of opinion voiced in our subcommittee. It's not going to get easier. So, you know, I think if I, if I knew where the majority of the board felt about the four versus six shall, you know, I would be willing to accept that, but it's very hard to tell right now.
It marched through them.
And the SPP versus SC.
All right, so we would be...
Sorry, have you?
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I'm sorry, but are you going to close the public hearing and deliberate and act, or are you going to continue the public hearing? I agree with, is this just a straw poll process?
This is, we're not going to be voting on anything, I don't think, but, I mean, I think it's like a straw poll process. So that we can give, I mean, we have, you're correct. We have been working as a board to try and, you know, define the zoning subcommittee's scope of what they're working on, and I think that we owe it to them to provide some guidance tonight, rather than sending them away empty-handed. I would really like to hear from the rest of the board on these, where you stand, so that we can have some idea. Because we know that the zoning subcommittee supports this as it is. We already know that they support it. They don't know what we have problems with on it, so.
If I may, we'll leave open the possibility of there actually being a vote. Is that right?
Anything is possible, Mr. Schreiber.
He buys articles, if we got that far.
Yeah.
Does that, I mean, anybody's welcome to overrule me on this. Mr. Rosnoy?
In terms of this being a comment toward a straw poll, I have suspicion that if those simple changes were put into an amended motion for the proposal, that probably it would carry those few specific changes, just amendments to the suggested language.
So I think that that would be, my understanding would be that such a motion...
If one were...
If one were made, would leave the use chart as it is.
As it was, sorry.
As it, as it currently stands, with no changes. Would change paragraph three to move RG into the four-unit category. Would leave item...
Excuse me. Are you going to apply that as well to RVC? Because right now, the four units, the six units applies to five different zoning districts, two of which are residential.
Actually, I would support changing it to four in all zoning districts, but that's just me.
Yeah.
Scratch all the language between...
What does that do to the master plan's notion of density in mixed-use centers?
Slightly.
In mixed-use centers.
The master plan is advisory in nature.
I'm asking the question.
It's a good question.
That's part of the discussion that we're having.
But the, if, if I may...
Yes, please, Mr. Schreiber.
But this particular document is really the, intended towards the conversion of existing houses, housing stocks. So I'm not sure that there's that much left, which hasn't been converted yet.
Yeah, well, that maybe will be true.
Yeah.
Infill and redevelopment.
Yeah, and we're, we are specifically talking about conversions. So on item three, I mean, I want to make this as palatable as possible in terms of the concerns that we're hearing from the public. And changing it to four for all these listed districts, it seems to me, is a pretty good compromise. Mr. O'Keefe?
I guess I would argue in favor of, I actually like the six in all of them, but if you're going to change that, I guess I would argue in favor of keeping it in the business districts, particularly the downtown BG district, where you do have a lot of variety of structures, and that is the core district where the highest density is appropriate, so.
So moving RG, then?
If you're going to change it, I would suggest RVC should go along with RG, definitely. You shouldn't change just RG.
So what about moving those two to four and leaving BG, BL, and VC as six?
I would find that okay.
All right. I'm hearing consensus on that. Number nine, that I think, I'm in, I'm in agreement with, with Mr. O'Connor, that this should be left at 500, but all the other changes can remain.
Habitable first footprint.
Maybe we leave that one alone completely.
Well, there's a, the part of the intended amendment here is to deal with a confusion about whether or not the size is as existing or following the conversion. So part of the language there is intended to, the, abides by the conditions of condition five above and upon completion part is clarifying an existing confusion, interpretive confusion the ZBA brought to our attention.
So what if it read, "No detached structure shall be converted under the provisions of section 3.3241 unless it abides by the provisions of condition five above and upon completion has an exterior footprint of at least 500 square feet." Does that remedy the concern that you just mentioned, Mr. Tucker?
If you use habitable space, you'll end up with more than 500 square feet of exterior footprint.
I don't think so, because as Mr. O'Connor pointed out, you can have two stories.
Or you could with footprint as well.
So you could have a, you could have a 500-square-foot footprint and have a 10-square-feet of habitable space, so it could be all porch. So the footprint is a drip edge. It's basically with the roof, it's the edge around the roof.
Right. The habitable space was addressing more than one question.
Yeah.
So I'm missing something here, just...
If I, yeah, if I may, so footprint is defined as the drip edge. So if it's a three-story building or a one-story building, it's whatever that drip edge is. 300, the habitable space is basically the heated and cooled floor area. So if it's two floors with no staircase, then it's 175 square feet per floor. But, so there's not necessarily even a correlation between footprint and habitable space. A very loose correlation.
I think that makes sense, but it would, it would allow a building with a, it doesn't appear to set a minimum for the exterior footprint anymore under your proposed change. So you could have a building that's, you know, 10 feet square and 40 feet tall.
Well, you'll never get more, well, okay.
We have height limits, though.
Yeah.
Of 40 feet.
Thirty-five feet, in most districts.
So you're not going to get a column.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. If it, I guess this is not necessarily the most critical part of this, but in some ways, the 350 square feet is a more, in my opinion, more sensible approach, because actually a lower footprint preserves land, you know, has more permeable surface. So in other words, having a dictated 500-square-foot footprint is a much less earth-friendly approach to this.
More responsible, more impactful, I mean, less impactful.
Mr. O'Keefe?
If we're taking a straw poll, I'm happy with, as it's written in the proposed amendment.
Yeah, being in...
Are you happy with it as it is?
As the zoning subcommittee has proposed it.
Correct.
I can live with it, too.
It's a 350.
As, as...
Amended to 350, or back to 500?
No, no, as proposed to be amended to 350.
Number nine, as proposed, all right. Then for 13 is the next controversial one, which is may clearly needs to become shall. Are there any other changes that anybody wants to propose on that one?
David?
Yes.
We had talked about under the second page, conversion may involve, in that paragraph, changing three criteria to two criteria.
Which, I'm sorry, which number are you talking about, please?
It's under the second page, so the paragraph starting with, "Conversion may involve an entire residential structure," and then there are A through E listed.
And that was to be changed to two?
We, that was their consensus, right? Change it to two instead of three.
If I may, under C, in that section as well, there were a number of corrections, you know, 15.12 or 15.13, and the subcommittee wanted to add reference to the statutes that the last phrase refers to, which can be done readily.
Strike number 14, that's shown already on this draft.
I'm, we were just, staff is over here debating whether or not as a consequence of the change of leaving the use chart as it stands, with just special permit, number two here just goes away.
Yes.
Do you wish to entertain the possibility of requiring owner occupancy for converted dwellings at a certain number of units, as is proposed as a blanket requirement under the petition article?
Well, you sound like you might have a suggestion in mind, Mr. Tucker.
Not necessarily.
I thought that provision's already here.
If you've gone to four units from six, that changes the dynamic somewhat. But the first question is if, upon change of the permit requirement, or the lack of change, number two just goes away entirely. There's no, which was one of your owner occupancy requirements.
Also, we lose the references to, no, I guess that stays the same, special permit granting authority or permit granting board, because we'll still have SPR in the BG district.
Correct.
And then, so 14 is deleted.
If two goes away, the rest of them will be renumbered, by the way. When you see it next, don't be surprised if the numbers change.
We put two, reserved for future use.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
As a consequence of two... As a consequence of two going away, which is a consequence of removing site plan review, as a possibility for a two-unit space that is owner-occupied, that would introduce a inconsistency with the way that we're proposing that duplexes be regulated in a separate article?
That's right.
That's correct, and I think that.
Are we comfortable with that?
What's that?
I said, are we comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with it.
So in a converted dwelling, you'd require a special permit for a two-unit owner-occupied building, but as a greenfield construction, that's not a converted dwelling, you'd allow that by site plan review?
No. I'd require a special permit for that regardless of whether it's owner occupancy or not.
The subsequent two-family dwelling is, will seek to require a special permit for that.
Because now it's regulated by site plan review for a duplex, and the proposal is to regulate it by site plan review for an owner-occupied duplex.
Well, I guess my thinking would be that, you know, if we want to continue this and discuss it in light of, of the duplex regulations, then that, you know, we can, we can do that.
I'm not inclined.
I'm not concerned about the inconsistency at this time, but.
Okay.
Mr. Schreiber?
So the way that I understand it right now, so the scenario that you're describing, if you own a house and you want to convert it to a duplex, you basically have the choice of going in through the converted dwelling or in through the duplex. And so you, basically, we give the property developer the choice. You know, assuming that they meet the criteria for either one, they could choose whichever path they want to go.
Well, I mean, my, honestly, the first thing that occurred to me, I mean, that occurred to me during the course of this discussion, was to delete this section completely and eliminate the category of converted dwellings entirely.
Second.
And then you're talking about a duplex regardless of how it gets there, and it eliminates Mr. Stietzmann's concern about the historical quality of it. And then you're just talking, you're either talking about a duplex or a multifamily unit or what have you. And, you know, I think there's a strong feeling in town that more oversight is needed towards that process, irrespective of whether it's new construction or whether it's a existing conversion. And irrespective of whether there's an owner currently on site, because an owner can always move out, and there you, then you have an unowned, you're owner-occupied, that's, you know, how do you deal with that?
If we followed your logic and we didn't want to have this category at all, then we would vote this down, and we would have to come back with a proposal to delete the converted dwelling section of the bylaw and have a public hearing on that. Is that correct?
Which would in the process create nonconformities all over Amherst where converted dwellings have been created and permitted, and they would have to apply for new permits for, to be a duplex, to be an apartment, to be a townhouse, to be whatever.
I love, is, well. I'm just trying to explore the scope of the question.
I like it, I just don't like the consequences.
There you go.
So if I may, I think the, your zoning subcommittee has that same concern about trying to see this sunset for those and other reasons, but we think that at least tweaking this now for now, until we can actually figure out what the implications of that are, is the best route to go. But we share that concern.
So the worst that would happen if we don't change the use category and we change the use, is that it simply pushes everyone into duplex or multifamily dwelling rather than trying for a converted dwelling permit.
And, and the consequence of that, and I think that the reason for the existence of this, as Mr. Schreiber and Mr. Tucker pointed out originally, is that the idea of converting a dwelling is intended to create a path for adaptive reuse of existing, perhaps historic, structures that are part of the fabric of a neighborhood, rather than just knocking them down and building something from scratch. And if we have a set of regulations that makes it easier to knock it down and build something from scratch, then of course people are going to choose that route, rather than going through a more onerous process for converted dwelling.
Well, we've come full circle here. Mr. O'Connor, I'll, please don't grumble back there. Did you have something that you wanted to add, Mr. O'Connor, to the discussion?
No.
Okay.
If I may, where, may I suggest a place of rest on this, which is that you have offered recommendations to the zoning subcommittee. I think those are reasonably clear. Leave the use chart as it is, go to four units in RG and RVC district. With number nine, leave it as proposed. With number 13, impose the shall rather than the may. The number five, which is on the back of page two, the changes that were noted, and number two goes away as a consequence of the changes to the permitting requirements. If you wish to then continue the hearing, whether to the 10th with five of you, which is a reduced circumstance, but nonetheless a quorum, or to 7:05 on the 17th, those to me seem your, seem to be your options.
Third option, motion to vote on it tonight?
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the rest of the board to decide where we go from this point. If anybody wants to make some type of a motion, I'll entertain it. Mr. Schreiber?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Can we reopen it if we decide not to take a vote?
Reopen it tonight. Otherwise, you'll have to reschedule.
We have to readvertise.
Are there any competing motions? Mr. Crowner?
I move to continue the public hearing till 7:05 on the 17th.
I'll second.
Mr. Schreiber, in light of Mr. Crowner's motion, do you wish to withdraw your motion, or do you want to leave it on the table?
Well, in light of the recognition that we can reopen tonight, if the next motion fails, then I'm going to stick with my, stick with my motion.
Mr. Chair, by way of discussion, I don't think I'll be able to be here on the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Rosner. The first motion is, we're going to need to come to a vote on the, the first motion to close the public hearing. The only motion to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, the motion carries.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, abstaining. No one. Okay. That carries five to four, and the, the public hearing is closed. We, at some point, need to deliberate on this article. We can either do it now or later.
I personally would hate to see us lose our energy on this one article. We spent so much time on it. I would recommend that we try to finish it.
Is it appropriate to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to recommend to town meeting this article as amended, as described most recently by Mr. Tucker.
Any further?
I'll second that.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Which is that, that most recent description by Mr. Tucker included the use chart as it stands in the bylaw today, is that correct? With just SP?
Yes.
Can I just clarify that?
Could you, could you pull the microphone over?
I just want to clarify that for item nine, we're saying that we are leaving it at 350 square feet? Okay.
That was the, that was my understanding.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Chair, just to get some of the other clarifications, in what's currently, item 13, it's shall, not may. And what's currently, item two disappears?
Correct.
And according to Mr. Harson, number five, what's currently number five at the end of the, you want the third paragraph, it's two of the following criteria, not three? Is that correct?
And in section C, the second reference to section 15.12 changes to 15.13?
And the, and the last phrase, which starts eligibility counted on the commonwealth, et cetera, we will weave in references to the statutes involved.
There's a minor typo in C, paragraph five, conversion results.
And, Mr. Rosner, you're doing such a good job, why don't you continue?
My mind has run out, Mr. Chair.
Number nine is as proposed by the zoning subcommittee. That's it. 14's deleted. That's it. You got it. We have a, I believe we have a motion that's been moved and seconded on the article as changed by us tonight. Any further discussion on that, Mr. Crowner?
So I think this article is, is fine, as amended, but the reason I voted against, the reason I suggested continuing the motion, the hearing, is that it would give the zoning subcommittee a chance to actually review the petition article and see whether there is any commonality or potential for adjustment. And so we, so it's conceivable that we would bring a slightly different version.
I would agree with that. I think that would be useful.
If I may, procedurally, you've closed the hearing, you made a recommendation, you can at a subsequent meeting decide to change your recommendation based on the work of the subcommittee. You don't have to open the public hearing again, I don't believe.
Okay.
All right. That being the case, I'm satisfied that we can make further changes if we absolutely have to, to bring it in, to reach some kind of consensus, and we will be hearing, we'll be having a hearing on the petition article as well. Further, further comment on this motion?
Call the question.
Call the question? Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. The question having been called will come to immediate vote. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Vote on what?
Call the question.
Would you call the question? Was that to call the question?
That was, I guess that was to call the question.
Okay.
I'm being silly, I'm getting punchy here. The, the, we'll now come to a vote on the, whether to recommend the article as we've just spoken of to town meeting. Correct? Okay. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Is that everybody? That's everybody?
Yes. Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to the members of the public for coming in tonight. I'm, what's that? I'm going to recommend that we continue the remaining zoning public hearings here, single-family, two-family, and lodging or boarding house to another night. It's a great idea. I don't know how we can do anymore tonight.
You can, if I may, Chris will.
Ms. Brestrop.
Chime in here with a.
Go ahead.
I was going to suggest that you take one and continue the other two.
Do one?
I agree. Because we'll never.
Go ahead.
Are you suggesting taking one tonight? You have the town hall parking lot, you have people waiting in the hallway to talk about the town hall parking lot.
That's the one I'm talking about doing.
And you have someone here talking about, wanting to talk about Olympia Drive and the continuation, and the select board is waiting to hear from you about that, and so are you suggesting that you would take the town hall parking lot tonight?
That's correct.
Yes. Thank you.
I said the zoning articles, the town hall, or is it a site plan review? Sorry for the confusion.
Well, can we, were you recommending doing one more zoning? I'm sorry.
I was recommending doing, doing one, the simpler of them, but the way things go, simplicity is never Amherst's strong point. If you want to continue them to 7:05 and subsequently, on the 17th, you can, and we will shuttle them into that agenda.
Well, my thinking is that why don't we wait to even touch them until after we've done the, I mean, there's no rule that says that we have to do them in the same order, they just have to come after the time that they're noticed, correct?
Yes.
So why don't we do this public hearing on the parking lot, do Olympia Drive, and then we'll deal with continuing the other three?
But now to say continuing, I mean, continuing in.
Or not. Or hearing them.
Yeah.
We'll now proceed with the public hearing on the parking lot.
As soon as Ms. Kruger returns. Yes, Mr. Fiber, could you come, please, forward to the microphone?
I only want to know, are you tabling the zoning? I'm a little confused. Are you tabling the remaining zoning articles until the 17th? Or are you saying you're going to hold them tonight, hold off to decide whether you're tabling them until you have the public hearings on the parking lot and the other items?
No on one, yes on two.
What?
Say that again?
The latter.
The latter.
The second one.
So you are, haven't decided yet whether you are going to continue them or hear them tonight?
That's correct.
So you're asking the public to remain?
Um, I am.
Because if the public is here to, to announce our.
Let's wait till Ms. Kruger returns. No, you have a valid, both of you have a valid point, and the last thing on my mind is wanting to.
Half the board could do.
We can't split off into study groups, unfortunately.
If you're on this side of the round.
Having a problem with the, we just want to get a clarification, whether we're expected to stay for however long.
If you could use them, I'm sure they can hear you on the mic, but if you're going to talk, I would ask that you use the microphone.
My sole question is, obviously, I am here on some of the other zoning issues, is what I was concerned with, and I'm just wanting to know whether I need to remain here because they may be discussed, and you're saying possibly, or whether those are things that are not likely to be reached, given that it's 9:30 at this time, and you're about to take two items of business, which no one knows how long they're going to take.
I'm out of, yes, Mr. Crowner?
I would suggest that we try and take up lodging and boarding house.
Yeah.
And not do the other two.
Yeah, I would agree.
Decide not to do the other two.
Second.
Would it make sense as, as part of that to continue the other two, so that they're dealt, they're all just dealt with, and then we can proceed to the others?
I'm not following, I'm sorry.
If, if the board decides to pursue Mr. Crowner's suggestion that you take up the lodging or boarding house definition next on your agenda, then what you should, staff would recommend, given the time and everything else, is that you continue the other two, single-family and two-family dwellings to the 17th at 7:05.
If I may ask, Mr. Fiber and Ms. Adams, are you here to speak to all the zoning articles, single-family, two-family, and lodging or boarding house, or are you here on particular?
I'm actually here on the lodging house definition, because I think you have a conflict potential with definitions regarding your single-family, and I just want to clarify that.
Without getting into too much detail, we hear you. Ms. Adams?
Uh, uh, two, well, anyone else in the public here to speak to specific ones?
Which, which ones, Mr.?
Well. Well, we're just, Mr. O'Connor, we're, we're talking about possibly doing the public hearing for lodging or boarding house definition tonight and continuing the single and family, two-family dwellings till another night. Which ones were you going to speak to, sir?
I had, I can't just say all of the zoning articles, including the definition, all state or whatever you want to hear.
Well, we're in a difficult situation here.
So I, I, I'm actually, I'll just make a motion that we do what Mr. Crowner says, that we hear the lodging and boarding house tonight, after town hall and after Olympia Drive?
We don't usually vote on things like this. All in favor? Just so that I don't have to take all the heat. Okay. Thank you. That's what we'll do. We will be moving directly to the public hearing on the town hall parking lot, following which we'll hear Olympia Drive, following which we'll hear the lodging, lodging or boarding house definition, if we have time. Okay. Yes?
To clarify, you haven't yet continued two-family and two-family. You're going to do that later.
That's correct. We'll take care of it later. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and comment on this proposed site plan. SPR 2013, one slash M14917, for Boltwood Avenue, Town of Amherst, also known as the parking lot. Request site plan review approval for renovation of the parking lot behind town hall, including location of a new generator to support emergency communications, new lights, and restriping under section 3.342 of the zoning bylaw, map 14A parcel 304, and this is in the BG zoning district. So, Ms. Brestrop?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out a technicality, that you did open this public hearing, you read the preamble and opened it on the 19th, but there wasn't a quorum available, and so therefore you continued it to tonight.
This meeting was originally opened on September 19th and was continued to tonight. Yes, sir. Thank you for coming before us tonight, and why don't you tell us who you are and what you're going to do?
Actually, my name is Paul Deathier, and I work for the Amherst DPW. I'm actually here tonight filling in for Mr. Ron Bahnowitz, who couldn't make it. So I, to be honest with you, I haven't seen a copy of the application. I do have an extra plan, if people do not have a copy of the plan in the application. But basically, what the project involves is the installation of a 10 by 17-foot concrete generator pad and an emergency generator, which is powered by natural gas. The project also involves redoing some of the existing drainage structures in the parking lot and installing new piping. It includes also removing the existing asphalt, which has been done, regrading the parking lot, repaving, and then restriping with nine by 18-foot parking stalls. So with the new parking stall layout, there are actually 18 total parking spaces, and two of those are handicapped with the appropriate signage for that. The parking lot had one kind of taller Cobra head light in the back corner, and that has been replaced with two smaller lights, which are 55 watt on the new decorative-style pole, which we are using on Spring Street and other areas of downtown. The lights on the building itself have actually been installed, new light heads have been installed, and the fixtures have been painted black. As far as the trash removal and the dumpster location, it's my understanding that that's going to stay unchanged. And in terms of snow removal, I think that is also going to stay unchanged. I think it gets plowed into a portion of the parking lot, and then the DPW comes and picks that up when they have a chance. So that, that's basically the project. I can do my best to answer the questions. I can answer a lot of questions on the layout of the parking lot with the generator. I don't have the specifics on.
Could you tell us a little more about the lighting? Is that completely downcast, or is it the open top fixtures that are along the street?
No, it's actually downcast lighting that can be adjusted. It's, it's 55 watt. It's my understanding, it's not shielded, but you can adjust it down, so you can actually determine the extent of the light area on the ground.
So there's no light going upwards from it?
No. And I, I do have a photo of what's out there, if that was not submitted with the application.
Maybe I just missed it in the application, but.
Will see that, or would you like me to pass that?
Can everyone see that? Okay.
If you want to walk around.
Ms. Brestrop?
There was no photo submitted, so this is the first time you're seeing it, but I did speak with Fred Hartwell, who is the town electrician, and he said it's the same light that's being, that's shining on the front of the Grace Church facade, and it is very focused on the facade. There's no light spill, and it's a very soft light. It's not a harsh light, as many floodlights are.
55 watts is not a lot either, so. Yes?
Do we know where the two lights are located on the site plan? Because I, and maybe I just was having trouble. If you could show us where they are. Maybe, hardly a comment, this is the public hearing, and the lights have already been installed? Is that correct?
Actually, yes, the foundations have been.
So, the only thing I really care about back here is adequate lighting for safety. And as a woman, I have felt really frightened being back there. It is so dark, and this has been going on for years. And now we have lights that are already installed, and we don't get to review where they go. And if this were a private applicant, I would be really upset. So maybe we'll decide that it's adequate, and it's a big improvement and much safer. But I'm really frustrated that we're, we have lights already installed before we've even completed the review.
I agree. I mean, this, the lighting was the biggest problem back there, and that's, you know, the one thing that I was really concerned about. I mean, I didn't even understand until you said that, that this is a picture of the actual light that's already been installed?
Yep, that's correct.
The town has violated its own.
The, actually, again, there was one light pole already there that was just removed and replaced with a different foundation. The fixtures themselves were installed later on the foundation. You know, the conduit is, has to be installed in the parking lot.
No, we're not blaming you. It's just a little, it's very surprising. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to point out that the building commissioner sent this to the planning board because of the generator. I think otherwise, he might not have sent this to the planning board. So it was sort of a, the project got started, and then the building commissioner, who was new at the time, became aware that it was going on, and he said, halt, this has to go to the planning board. So it was a little bit of a muddled situation, and I apologize for that.
Well, I suppose we can set a condition that when it's finished, if the lighting's not adequate, the town is going to have to come back before the town and, and add more lighting.
Can I ask one more question about lighting? When we did the site review, there was a little talk about possibly having a small light fixture next to the parking meter, where you get your parking ticket. Is, is that possible? Because it, it could be very dark for people to see to get their parking tickets.
Yeah, again, I, I would have to ask.
We, we talked about just a small lamp, not, not a towering lamp, but just something that would be maybe three or four feet high, just to eliminate the parking meter.
So, Mr. Carson brought up a good point, that there was a site visit, which I neglected to mention. The site visit took place at 9:05 PM.
So we didn't see the nightlights when we were there.
So that's a, that's a typo. We know where it is. It's right behind this building. It's a flat site. There's two driveways, which are both one-way. Are those proposed to stay the same one-way as they are now?
Yes.
It's surrounded by a wooden guardrail, which is going to stay the same. There's a large noise dampening enclosure at the back of town hall protruding into the parking lot area that houses the air handling equipment. The town is proposing to repave the parking lot. What kind of pavement is being proposed?
I believe they're just putting the base course down this year.
And on top of that will be asphalt?
Well, it's asphalt.
Okay. And redesign the parking configuration so that circulation and parking will be easier and more efficient. So we must have a diagram of the spaces here. The proposal includes two light poles, which we've just been discussing, adding the generator, which is going to be powered by gas. And this is a response to last year's October snow, October surprise snowstorm. So the generator's needed for that. Anyone who, I guess Mr. Carson and Mr. Crowner attended the site visit, did you have anything to add?
Well, I think we also talked about painting the generator to match the fence that's there. It's a dark red. It's a, like a barn red. So it would all be matching.
I'm having a great deal of trouble finding the parking space plan.
It's existing.
It's stapled to the back of the record. On mine, it's stapled to the back of an old record of decisions.
But that's the existing, not the proposed.
This shows the existing parking overlay with the new parking overlay.
Wait, maybe not. It, it still doesn't have the.
This management plan.
Yep.
We don't.
I don't think we.
Well, we have this. We have that.
Yeah, we don't, okay, so we can.
What's it on the back?
So, let's see, here's the, here's the parish house or. Where's the parking? You could.
Approximal location of the light pole.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And this is very dark here. I can tell you when you have to put money in that.
I was going to have it later.
As is where the light really shines.
No problem. Thanks. That's okay.
All right. Has everybody got, everybody seen a copy of the proposed parking?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm hugging, I'm hugging the big one.
All right.
May I ask Chris a question?
Of course.
Do you, do you know at what hours these parking meters are in effect? I would assume until 6 o'clock. Would that be right?
I think the parking meter back here is in effect until 8 o'clock.
Until 8 o'clock. Well, that's all the more reason why I think there might be a light back there, because it, it would be very difficult to see otherwise.
I've heard that comment from another person sitting next to me, that the meter machine is inadequately lighted.
That way.
Can't read it. It's pitch dark out there. Remains to be seen how the lighting, the new poles will affect it, but I don't think it's going to go far enough to be able to see a little screen that's this big.
Right.
And you have to punch, even if the screen's eliminated, the same problem in the CVS parking lot, you still have to punch in the number of your space.
Well, that's why I thought of a light that, I guess you'd call it a bollard light, that it's just a small light, but just high enough to read the meter.
Yeah. I have another question. Will the, the spaces will be numbered so that you can go into the meter and pick your space? Right before the site work began, they were painted on the ground, but that doesn't work in the snow. Are there, are there going to be elevated signs, do you know of?
I, I'm not sure. I believe that.
More of a parking issue than a lot replaced.
Believe that on Spring Street, they're all painted on the ground, and there are no actual tags.
Right. Which, and when it snows, you don't know what space you're in, or that there isn't even, even a space. Well, I would suggest that where these, there look like there's little, this could be the fence, if they just put an extension and said you're in space 12, 13, 14, or 15. So when you go to the meter, you know what space you're in. Because three or four months out of the year, we're likely to have snow or ice back there.
How would we? What, what kind of signage, Sandy, would you recommend for the center spaces?
Well, they, they can put a pole that, that faces both ways. It's like a concrete, like a, a bollard, basically, or, well, for snowplow removal, they probably want it wide open. But typically, they'll put an offset bollard with a sign that faces both ways, but that does inhibit snow removal. It's, helps one thing, but hurts another. But, you know, and it may be more of a parking issue than the DPW's issue. Just, I'm saying that, in my experience, we would put these in where I worked previously, at an institution down the road, that when there was snow over them, everybody appealed and said, because they can't tell what part, you know, everybody's running around trying to do a dance to find out where the number is.
Did that work?
It didn't work too well. No, no.
The dancing.
Well, we had to, had to grant some appeals, but, or that they, they could have one at the end that says rows, you know, one through eight, or on this side, and then spaces nine through 12 on the other or something. They could figure it out.
What if, where you go to pay, there's a little diagram of the lot with the numbers?
Could be that.
We don't have to impede.
I don't think we have to solve it for them. I just think that, that there has to be a logical.
I think we're more concerned with the positioning of the spaces in, in the scope of our site plan review here.
And, and ease of snow removal.
And the signage. Yeah. That's correct. I'm sorry. I didn't.
Either you guys want to see the large version? Richard, see the large version?
It's okay.
This is yours. You can have it back if you like it.
That's actually, it's all right if the board would like it.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll enter it into the record. Thank you. Other comments, questions from the board? Comments or questions from the public? Mr. O'Connor? If you could seed the microphone.
I can sit here if you want to. So I have comments in three areas. One with regard to the parking, the, the parking spaces numbered 12 through 18 that are at the end of the parking lot face a residential structure, and they're elevated above that, that residential structure, to the point that they will probably shine into the second floor windows of that structure. And therefore, in the absence of space into landscape, put a vegetative barrier between those spaces and the adjoining residential structure, I would urge that the, the board require fencing. If you're going to put a, like a, a barrier, you just put vertical things all along there to, to shield the adjoining residential structure from headlights, because when, you really can't assume that, that people there don't have schedules that mean that they don't want to be subjected to cars starting up. I mean, anyone can park. anyone can park there. So it isn't just people using the Town Hall, which tends to close at 10 or 11, but anyone who parks, who works in the downtown can park there, go to work at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, park there, and be starting up at 2 o'clock at night. And I think that if you're going to configure the parking lot, previously, the parking spaces in those areas were not headlight directed right at the building. But because these parking spaces are, I would just urge you to require, either if there's room, a vegetative, a firm vegetative barrier, or just a fence at the end that would separate those parking spaces from the adjoining, you know, visually and in terms of headlight shining, from the adjoining residential structure. Second thing, I, you know, I was on the Town Hall Committee, I really do think that there needs to be a light, I don't know if it's shown on the plan here, but I do think there needs to be some lighting in the alleyways, especially the alleyway coming in from Main Street. So I, you know, I do think that you gotta tell them, give us your best shot, but we want to see it before you, you know, before it's completed, that we gotta have more lighting there. Because that actually is one of the more difficult areas in terms of lighting. And that light, you know, if it's properly organized, might be sufficient to provide lighting for the machine that's used. So, and I don't know about the other area, I think you just, somebody, you know, the board needs to maybe go out and make sure that the other alleyway is sufficiently lighted by either existing lighting or streetlights to provide safe walkway, because people may walk in either way, even though cars are only supposed to circulate in one direction. People don't necessarily circulate, pedestrian travel doesn't circulate in the same direction as the automobiles. And then with respect to the lighting, I would just urge you, given the situation at the police station, where the police, the police station lighting just shines right in the windows and the bulbs are visible to the adjoining residential structures, that you insist that the lighting be configured in such a way that the source of illumination not be visible from the adjoining residential structures. The church presumably is not going to be a problem. And that there be some kind of timer on the lighting that shuts it off at some particular time of night, and then subjects it after that time to a motion sensor. So maybe after 11 o'clock, it goes off, and then if there is motion, sufficient motion back there by humans or automobiles, that the light will go on momentarily. But I think that would be, I think that would be helpful, because it would reduce the amount of, unless there's a security issue that the town has, it would reduce the amount of lighting that's being generated from, you know, 11 o'clock at night to whenever in the morning we have sunlight. And then with respect to the generator, speaking as somebody who pays taxes, not directly, but through my rent, and somebody who endured last year's power outage from Saturday night until Friday morning, which is somewhat different than some other folks in town. We didn't get our lights back on, literally, to almost just six and a half days. I would urge that you not approve the installation of the generator. My personal view is that in event of such, the recurrence of such things through an ice storm or something similar, early snowstorm that brings down a lot of trees, the places that I, none of the offices in this Town Hall, except maybe the manager's office, are going to be doing normal business. And the place that I would rather see an emergency generator is at the police station, which also, which had similar problems, and at the Bangs Community Center, which, if the adjoining elderly housing had emergency facilities to keep the buildings open and lighted, but did not provide emergency electricity for cooking, that the Bangs Center could be used, because it has those facilities to provide food for the elderly housing, so that the primarily elderly people who live in those 180 units in two buildings would not have to be moved to someplace else. So I would just urge you not to approve the generator in this location. The taxpayer, I think it's a waste of the taxpayer's money, and it's in the wrong location.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to clarify that Mr. Bahanowitz and other members of the Emergency Task Force, or I'm not sure exactly what it's called, have determined that this room will be used as a central point in an emergency. It'll be used as a command center, along with the police station, and that certain parts of this building will be used, mainly on the ground floor where the IT department is. The offices will not be open during an emergency. So it will really be that the generator is functioning to provide services during the emergency, and will not be providing, you know, lighting and power for regular town employees. The idea is that the town Emergency Task Force wants to have two command centers. They want to have one at the police station and one here. And I believe that there is a generator at the police station now. I'm not sure if it's powered by gas. They hope to have this one powered by natural gas, so it will have a continuous supply of power, and it won't be subject to being cut off. A lot of generators are powered by, you know, oil, for instance, and they're limited to a certain number of days. So the idea here is that we would have emergency, an emergency command center for as long as we need it, not to power town offices.
Can I just make a point?
Yes, Mr. Schreiber.
This is not the body that determines whether or not the emergency generator is needed here or not. Really, it's our job to do the site plan review. So there's other bodies that make that decision.
I'm inclined to agree.
I agree with that, yes.
All right. Yes, Ms. Kruger?
I'd be ready to make a motion with, including, and people can maybe help chime in with some of the conditions, because...
We haven't gone through our site plan review criteria yet.
Oh, we have to go through them, okay.
Unfortunately, yes, we need to go through them.
Let me just make a comment. You know, I volunteer, and I'm happy, you know, that I'm here, and I've been here since 5 o'clock, and I'm missing the presidential debates. And I'm really having a hard time having part of my time taken with excessive comment that's irrelevant to what we're doing, and to just be a little bit more respectful of the late hour and what we're trying to do. I feel like we're really, we've been pulled off track, and I want to honor public comment, but please be respectful of our time.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Was there further comment from the board before we go through the site plan review criteria? Because we can address things in the context of site plan review as well. Mr. Rosnoy?
Are we in public hearing right now?
Yes, we are.
Should we close public hearing? Or do you do that?
I think that unless there's further comment from the public, we should close the public hearing.
I move to close public hearing.
Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Passes unanimously? Oh, did you raise your hand? Okay, all right.
He doesn't want to close it.
Okay. All right. We'll go through the design review criteria, design guidelines. 11.240, conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw, yes. 2401, protection of town amenities and abutting properties through minimizing detrimental or offensive actions, that's not applicable. 2402, protection of abutting properties from detrimental site characteristics resulting from proposed use, including specifically in this case, light and noise, and visually expensive structures, perhaps. I see some merit in the idea of requiring a low fence at the end of the parking lot to shield headlights against the adjoining building. The fence should be only high enough to shield against headlights, because we don't want it to close in that area. It feels closed in enough as it is. Either vegetative barrier, or as Mr. Connor suggested, or a low fence, I think would be a condition.
You said visual barrier?
Visual barrier.
Adequate to shield the adjacent property. Then they can solve it.
I believe there is a wooden guardrail already existing along this side.
Yeah, it's just a guardrail, though.
Yeah, I don't think it's high enough for headlights, because it's fairly low. And before, it was parallel parking, now it's head-in parking.
Do you see the, do you see the issue, Mr. Deichner?
Yes, yeah.
So we don't have a motion yet, we're just going through issues here. 2403?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did we want to require that we see a lighting plan or something as proposed?
I agree. I think we should require a lighting plan showing foot candles and everything else like we require from commercial folks, showing that all areas of the parking lot and the alleyways are adequately lit.
On the alleyways, again, there are existing lights on the building. Two lights on the southern side, and actually, three lights already existing on the building on the alley going out to Main Street. And again, these lights got new heads and got repainted, so these areas are well lit.
With, I mean, with all due respect, we hear you saying that, but we, our eyes tell us differently when we've been back there.
Unless work has been done.
Unless work has been done since then, so...
We haven't been back there, because it's closed off.
And actually, there's no request for a wa, we do have requests for waivers, but the lighting plan is not one of them. So we really need a lighting plan. More comments on this section of, all right. Recreational facilities, not applicable. 2410, historic features, not applicable. 2411, refuse disposal, the dumpster's going to stay where it is. 2412, water supply sewage, not an issue. 2413, drainage. I think that the town engineer signed off on the drainage, is that correct? Is the drainage really changing? Ms. Brestrop?
My understanding is that the town engineer participated in the design of this parking lot. It was done by the engineering division, which is Paul Deathier and his colleagues, and the town engineer would have been supervising them. So I assume that he went along with what is being proposed. He did not comment.
The actual square footage of the paved area does not change, and what happened was basically the structures were falling apart, and the pipes were all cracked and crumbling. So the structures were replaced, and the pipe was replaced with SDR 35, which is newer material.
I see. So it sounds like drainage issues have been addressed? There's no...
At this point, yes.
Okay. Any concerns? Drainage? Okay, landscaping, 2414, this includes landscape islands, I presume it, yeah, it includes a vegetated buffer between buildings associated with uses. We already talked about in the context of lights. Was there anything else on this one? Ms. Brestrop?
During the site visit, Mr. Carson suggested perhaps putting some vegetation along the, what is this, the south side of the building to shield the new generator from the street. And so I think he's still interested in seeing something about that.
That would be good, sure.
So do you want to ask for a plan that would show proposed, we do not have a plan that shows proposed vegetation.
Where would that be exactly?
It would be along the west side of the area where the generator is located, proposed to be located, so that you wouldn't be able to see the generator from Boltwood Ave. And at the site visit, Mr. Bahanowitz said that that would be possible to do.
That wouldn't really close in the parking lot anymore, because the generator's already doing that, so it's acceptable to me. All right. Any other landscaping issues? There's not much scaping back there. 2415, soil erosion plan, there's no steep slopes. Protection of adjacent properties, we've talked about that already. 2417, falls under lighting plan. 2418, floods and other factors are not an issue. 2419, wetlands, not applicable. 2420, what zone are we in again? BG?
BG.
2420 is not applicable, unless we're in the historic district. In any case, we don't have any buildings going up, so I think it's not applicable. 2421, consistent with parking, the parking is the whole thing. Does anyone have any, well, I guess, are we going to get to that? 2422, not applicable. 2423, not applicable. 2424, screening, we've discussed requirements for screening, the generator and the east end of the parking lot. 2430, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. Is everybody satisfied with the new layout of the parking spaces being better than the existing one? Or any other problems with the layout of the parking spaces? Circulation, okay. 2431, curb cuts is not changing. The entrances and exits are somewhat hazardous, but that's just the nature of the location. 2432, parking spaces, bicycle racks, et cetera. We have bike racks out front. 2433, access to adjoining properties, not applicable. 2434, driveways, not applicable. 2435, not applicable. We have requests for waivers on the following: landscape plan, soil erosion plan, sign plan, and traffic impact statement.
We are asking for some landscape.
Yep. And we're actually withholding judgment on the sign plan as well, I think, with respect to parking spaces. Is that correct? Finally...
When you say withholding judgment, typically, our signage is, you know, more general in nature.
Yeah.
So, major signs, so yeah, I would say so. I think a major point, I'll waive it.
Yeah. Not really our purview. All right. Traffic impact report, they've asked for a waiver. All right. The waivers are landscape plan, soil erosion plan, sign plan, and traffic impact statement. Does anyone have any issues with those waivers?
May I? There's one other thing. The actual requirements for parking for a Town Hall are around 59 to 60 parking spaces, and obviously, there's not enough room for that many parking spaces. This building is also within the area that is encompassed by the municipal parking district, but this particular use is not one of the exempt uses. But I am pointing this out, just so that you have an opportunity to waive the parking requirement under Section 7.9. As a result of this being in the downtown area, there's bus service, people can walk to the building, there's already a lot of public parking surrounding the building, and so probably formally, you should take the action to waive the requirement for 60 parking spaces and accept the fact that there are 18 being proposed.
Wouldn't it be grandfathered? Because of Porson Buggy? I mean, it was built before there was a standard.
Maybe we should require a hitching post.
Then you need manure catchers.
Are you willing to volunteer for that job, or is that?
I am not.
Oh, is it?
Manure catchers.
I like that. That can be the name of our next trivia team.
I was thinking, shall not may.
Shall not may, yeah.
I'm just taking a quick look. I apologize to everyone for my haphazard approach to the site plan review, but I'm now looking at the development application report, and I just noticed that there were a couple things that was brought up in here, which include the color of the generator, which apparently, we can specify. Is there anyone who has a preference on that? Ms. Ford?
We discussed this at the design review board meeting, and it was readily accepted that they would just paint it to match the color of the brick and the already, the red brick color, as Mr. Carson had already previously indicated. So, I believe that's something you already agreed to.
Yes, that's correct.
Were there any other design review board issues that we need to know about? All right. Does anyone want to make a motion on this? I think such a motion would, you want to do it?
Well, I would move that we would accept it with the conditions as noted.
The conditions being, as.
That we just read, yes.
Okay, good. Chris, did you get all that for the?
I think I got them. I asked a question about the lighting.
And with all the usual conditions that Chris tacks on at the end.
Sandy, if I might, in part of that, I know we said lighting plan, but I wonder if we would be open to a conditional approval that would let them pave with going out and looking at the lighting as already installed and making a kind of site visit, idea if it's adequate or not adequate, because by the time they prepare their site plan and do all of that, we're going to have another month of an unpaved parking lot, and I want to address.
Turn on the lights tonight and go right out there. But I don't think they're up.
So, it's just kind of a way to make a conditional, they can move forward, but I don't want to give up any of the oversight on improving, this is the one chance to improve lighting like we're ever going to have.
Well, I think the chair asked for a lighting plan to be submitted, because we had some questions about the shields and the downlighting, and I think, and part of that lighting plan, we had suggested, part of this motion's just a discussion on the side, is making sure that there's lighting that lights up the parking machine, and the petitioners has told us that there are, you know, there's lighting along the side of the building. I guess that needs to be done as a site plan review at night or something, then.
Well, here's the thing, I don't think that approval of the lighting needs to hold up to paving.
No.
That wasn't my intention at all.
No. They should be able to go ahead.
Basis for more lighting.
Yeah, but actually, we're only putting the base coat, asphalt down this year.
Is the base on yet?
No.
So, they have a limited amount of time for that, they have November at best.
Yeah, I don't want to hold up the paving at all.
Yeah, no, the asphalt plants will close.
So, is this a, this is a condition that you come back with a lighting plan, I guess, after it's paved, really?
Yeah. That it's conditional that they can go ahead with the paving part and the other parts that are not conditions.
So, you did have a condition on two forty-nine South Pleasant, that you were going to visit the site and observe it in its, you know, condition, and then come back and make a decision, and you did that with the shutters. So, you could make a similar condition here, that you're going to come back and have a site visit in the evening and observe what the lighting situation is like, and then make a determination about whether or not you want more lighting at that point.
I think we could probably do it at six forty-five on some Wednesday in January when we already have a meeting.
Yeah.
Yes. Do you want something to that effect? You want me to craft something to that effect? Okay.
Yes. We're on a roll.
Just before the converted development discussion.
And as a sidebar, you're striping for the winter, right? And then you'll put a top coat on in the spring and stripe again, okay. We don't do well in parking lots without lines. So, that's the.
That's the motion?
Motion, I think.
All right.
A second?
So, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Dightner, for coming in and presenting the site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
We have someone here on Olympia Oaks.
Well, Chris is setting up. My name's Rudy Perkins, I'm a project manager and staff attorney at Hap Inc., the developer of the Olympia Oaks site, and this is a proposal, as you know, to have the Olympia Drive piece that connects to the site accepted as a townway. I'm not sure I have enough copies here, but this is more or less what Chris was going to have on the board. There's two sheets, so you have an easier thing to see. And I thought, Chris is our site engineer, so he can get into the specifics about the road and his discussions with the town engineer and the building commissioner, I believe, also on this. But I thought maybe I could give you a quick context for this. As you all probably remember, the Olympia Oaks development came out of a town request for proposals. This is on a town-owned parcel of land at the end of Olympia Drive. Olympia Drive itself actually runs across University of Massachusetts land, and the town has an easement to access the parcel. Hap was selected through the RFP process as a preferred developer, and the plan in the RFP was that Hap would not purchase the site, we would be a ground lessee on a ninety-nine year ground lease. We negotiated with the town a land development agreement that was the site control for this site, and it had a number of detailed conditions that had to be met for us to go into, to enter into the ground lease and develop the project. And one of those conditions was that the town shall have laid out and accepted Olympia Drive as a public way. Just from a practical standpoint, from Hap's point of view, with all due respect to the university, it can be a somewhat opaque and distant institution to work with if you're dealing with ninety-nine years of snow removal and so forth on the access way to your property. That was one of the reasons, among others, but that was one on our mind when we negotiated with the town to have the town accept Olympia Drive as a public way. And that was put in as a condition in the land development agreement. Once that, there's a number of other conditions, but that was one of them that was a precondition to entering into the ground lease and then building the housing and resurfacing and improving the road there. So, we had Dusset and Associates, the site engineer, do an assessment of Olympia Drive. I don't know if you've been out there, it's in pretty bad shape. It was part of the deal with the town that we would do enough, you know, the improvements to bring it back up, and so Chris can sort of walk you through what we're proposing to do. It's essentially keeping the road in its same location and so on, but, well, I'll let him give you the details there. So, just going back, this is a condition, the town's acceptance of this is a public way in our agreement with the town, so we've been expecting this. It has a very practical advantage to us, even though we have access through the easement. And once we enter into the ground lease, close on our funding, we undertake to do the improvements that are outlined here, so that the road's brought up to a good point. That would, I've talked with our general contractor, and it makes the most sense, actually, to do that towards the end of the construction process, so that we're not dragging our heavy trucks over a road that we've just improved. So, it would be done now, if we can get into construction in the spring, probably in September or October next year, that's our hope, if all goes well.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brestrop, did you have a comment before you?
I just wanted to clarify for the board that what you're being asked to do is, if you choose to make a recommendation to the select board, to make a recommendation to the select board about whether the town should accept this as a public way. And then the select board will put it on the town warrant if they decide to, and this will go to town meeting, the eventual decision about whether this will be accepted as a townway. So, you are being given the opportunity to comment on this layout and this plan for Olympia Drive. You do not have to make a recommendation, it's not required, but you're given forty-five days from the time that the slug board invites you to make this recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Why don't you?
Oh, yeah, and just to clarify, we're at a slight disadvantage because we haven't seen the motion. I don't know if the town council attached the proposed motion with the meets and bounds or whatever, but just at a read of what we got, it seemed like it might be confusing about what was actually being asked to be accepted as a proposal, so.
If you could, you'll need to take the microphone with you, you can take it off the stand.
So, there's always been a little bit of confusion over whether this little piece, the Olympia Oaks housing site is here, fraternity and sorority and UMass admissions office, sort of on Mather Drive and on this piece of Olympia Drive. UMass has some parking lots over here, and this portion is clearly Authority Way, and this portion is clearly Olympia Drive, but this piece has gone under several names. So, although your proposal talks about accepting Olympia Drive and Authority Way, what we are actually talking about is the piece that is here, the shortest distance right to the site. We have no plans to improve this, we never were asking the town to accept this portion. That really isn't necessary for this development, and that would remain university responsibility. So, in the final language of the meets and bounds or whatever, we'll just have to make sure that it's clear that it's this portion here to the site of Olympia Drive, and if this is really Authority Way, which it may be that piece of it, but not here. So, and that's, and this strip is exactly what we're proposing and have been expecting to improve, and Chris can explain that.
Thank you very much. Let's have, I guess, a brief description of the details you want to provide us?
Sure. Chris Stidson with Dusset and Associates. So, we are only proposing to do improvements on what would be easement area one to the limits of the easement area on the streets. It's in very rough shape, both the pavement and the curbing. So, what we're proposing to do with the pavement is to reclaim it, which is you basically grind the asphalt into the subbase to get a stronger subbase, but then we're going to strip off the top four inches of that and lay down four inches of new pavement, so the overall effect will be nothing changes. But we'll have the new subbase, the new pavement, rip out all the curbing, put in new curbing, rip out all the sidewalk, put in new sidewalk, but all in the same place. So, really, our proposal is to just make it all new, but not change anything. We got the existing condition survey, we reviewed the existing widths and slopes, grades with DPW and engineering, we confirmed that it met all subdivision standards, so they were happy with the actual physical properties or dimensional properties. We did pavement borings to determine the pavement cross-section that was required. We found some areas in these, kind of adjacent to these wetlands, where the groundwater was a little high, so we're proposing under drains on either side of the road. And we're also extending cable TV service from these two residential houses here all the way back. I'm sorry, this is on the same board, so you just have to see the continuation here, but, so the cable TV service will come all the way back to where we've already stubbed it out for the Olympia Oaks development. What else do we have here? There'll be new crosswalks and signage to town standards. And actually, the only real substantive change we're going to make, as far as dimensional things go, is we're going to increase the radius of this curb here as you come off of East Pleasant Street, because there's a bus line that comes through, services the university, and they keep clipping this curb, kind of driving over the grass there, so we're going to put a bigger radius there, and that's about it. Do you have any questions about the changes?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Rosnoy?
Are those orange lines the under drainage for the road, or?
No, I'm sorry, this plan was also used for our notice of intent with the conservation commission, and they granted us a negative determination, so this is actually the hundred-foot wetland buffer.
I see.
For the green lines are the wetlands. We're proposing silk fence for erosion control during construction as well, those are the yellow lines, let's see.
What is the width of the road at its main point? I realize it changes in certain places, but.
Yeah, it really changes because they have these little pull-off areas for parallel parking that have never been used as such. Let's see, generally, it's about thirty feet wide.
Will there be bicycle lanes?
Bicycle lanes are not proposed at this time, but that's certainly a recommendation you can make to the select board. I believe there's, there would be adequate width for them, but this is also a very low-volume street. There's really not much back there right now.
Yeah. Mr. Carson?
I had a question, actually, for Chris. Do you know if the town has plans to extend the sidewalk on East Pleasant Street to Olympia Drive? It's something like a hundred feet short of that right now.
The town would like to extend the sidewalk, but there's a question about whether there's enough right-of-way on that side of the road to do that, so I understand that they're looking into it, the DPW's looking into it, and they will make that happen if it's possible.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Ms. Krueger?
Just, if, I know on the back of one of your boards, you have the layout of the development, because there will be forty-two more homes, and sort of to Mr. Rosnoy's point, if there's any way to improve either bike lane access in a safe way, or, you know, realizing that some people will be walking and some people hopefully will be biking to the new development area, and if people were here when we've looked at this prior, it was a while ago.
Yes, Mr. Schreiber?
Will this road even be striped? It won't have, I'm assuming that this is more like a, kind of a village lane, like an unstriped road?
I don't think we've shown striping on the plans. If it was striped, it would be more of a single yellow line kind of situation, and this is a very low-use residential road.
My gut feeling is that bike lanes.
It's not currently striped, nothing's striped.
No, it's very well, there's nothing for the stripes to hold on to. Yeah, right, potholes.
Mating the dirt.
Yeah, I actually go back here a fair amount to go running and things like that.
We gave you a nice new running loop now.
I know, I know.
So, the infrastructure for this development is already in place, the town did that as a separate project, so the Loop Road, which you can see here. So, you can see our development ends around here, and that's when the new, already constructed Loop Road starts up, and you kind of come around here in a clockwise fashion. There's an outer loop and then an inner loop, community building, some buildings with five apartments and then triplexes around the perimeter.
Mr. Rosnoy?
Is there a requirement for a report from the fire department, or has there been one for access for fire trucks to get back there and be able to turn around, exit?
Yeah, that was all done is under the forty-B through the.
Through the comp permit process, there was extensive. Through the comp permit process, there was extensive discussions with the Fire Department and changes made on the housing site to accommodate trucks better in terms of certain areas where there would not be parking. We changed the access down through the center of the property, as I recall, to give front access in the building, and some other changes. So the Fire Department is...
The Fire Department is satisfied at this point?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Schreiber?
I mean, I think this is a great plan. I think that that's, that is what we're here, though, to decide is whether we want to recommend this to the Select Board, and if so, do we want to add any value to that recommendation with some specific, anything specific? I'm propose, I would propose to recommend this as-is, with no changes to the Select Board. I think I'm perfectly satisfied that this meets the requirements for a public road, that it's going to more than satisfy the needs of this development, and that should be approved.
That's a motion, I'll second.
Can you make a motion?
I can't make a motion.
Okay, I'll move what he said.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I would, I would like to see designated bike lanes in this. I would move that as an amendment to the motion. I am in favor of it also, but I'd like to see designated bicycle lanes. There are going to be students back there and getting back, and also people, townspeople getting in and out. And I think bike lanes are, should be an important part of it.
Does anyone else agree with Mr. Rosnoy on this? Second, Ms.?
I do, and also, I think that the nature of the development is not geared towards students, it's geared towards families, which means children, which is even more of a safety issue when it comes to bicycles or maybe even riding. There's a school not too far away, Wildwood. And the other thing is, having worked with parking at UMass, there's quite a few cars that park back there, hundreds of cars. So that there is going to be, and with this, however many units, 50 units, and the traffic that's now being put into a roadway that has borders and no parallel parking and all the funny stuff that's been happening along there, because I can tell, as the person responsible for this property, we were waiting never to pave that road because we couldn't afford it, that I think that the bike lane is a, is, that would really make this a really great project, not just a good project, because of the safety factor back there, and, you know, for all the bike reasons. And I don't even ride a bike, but...
So you asked me if I had amended my motion, but so I'm not in favor of bike lanes, and I do bike. And so it's arguable as to whether or not bike lanes are actually safer or not, so...
With people and dogs on them and things like that?
Yeah, yeah, so...
Well, could we urge that the Select Board consider the possibility of bike lanes? Would that satisfy both sides?
Sure.
I guess that doesn't really address your concern. Mr. Tucker?
This is part of the process for making this a public way. Once it becomes a public way, the town has, will have the ability to do any and all of that, but we've got to get there first, so...
Under what circumstances would anyone have any input into that?
You can do what you just suggested, that pass along a recommendation to the Select Board that in the future, a bike lane be added to this as part of the process of improving the roadway.
At least consideration be given.
Consideration be given.
I can support that for what it's worth.
Sure. Is that satisfactory to you, Mr. Rosnoy?
Sure.
Thanks. Brestrup?
That was a motion?
I think that was an amendment to the motion.
Oh, was it an amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
And do we have a second on top of the amendment as well?
Second?
Carson? Any further discussion?
Do we vote on the amendment first?
All in favor of the motion.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended. Thank you, yes. That's unanimous. Thanks, folks, for coming in here and presenting this, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And best of luck in completing this on your timescale.
Do you want extras of these back?
Sure, if you're not going to use them?
Yep.
Go to the Select Board, save a tree.
That's right.
Do it.
Thank you. Oh, we need these back.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your patience.
Should we attach something else, like attach the boarding house onto that?
The boarding house, send it with them. Send it off to the... All right, so we, okay, we are going to now have another public hearing, so... I hear Ms. Brestrup chiming in.
I just wondered if you wanted to consider the Chapter 61 removal request?
Oh, should we do that first? What's our time limit on the 61A?
Well, you have 120, the town has 120 days from the time they receive this letter from Bacon and Wilson. They received the letter on August 13th, so 120 days would be four months, right? December, October, and December. By December 13th.
Let's consider that at a later meeting.
Consider it a later meeting.
Which one do we do? Okay. "In accordance with Sections 5 and 11 of Chapter 48, these public hearings have been duly advertised and noticed thereof has been posted and mailed to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and Abutting Towns. These hearings, this hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding the proposed amendment to the Amherst zoning bylaw. This amendment will be on the warrant for annual town meeting. A 0413 lodging or boarding house definition to amend Article 12 definitions of the zoning bylaw to add a definition for lodging or boarding house." Take it away, Mr. Crowner.
So that, there, that's all this is doing, is adding a definition which we don't currently have. In our discussions about residential rental use, a lot of people refer to a place that houses students as a lodging house or a boarding house, but there's actually a technical definition. It's sort of embedded in the bylaw, in the, in the use chart for lodging and boarding house, and in the language around supplemental use of boarding. But there's no actual definition, so we thought it was useful to add a definition so that we understand what we're talking about when we talk about lodging and boarding house. So there's no, there's no new regulation or no new provisions provided here. It just pulls together language that already exists and put it in the definition. So a lodging house is a residential use where the owner lives there and then rents out rooms and provides meals and so forth to, between six and 10 boarders.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Because this is short, I'm going to just read the whole thing out loud for everyone's benefit, including those who may be listening at home. This is a new definition, so it's, it's all new. Lodging or boarding house: A commercial residential use housed in a single dwelling or in a part of a dwelling where no fewer than four but not more than 10 unrelated persons are let or sublet lodging in private quarters for definite periods of time, and where there are no overnight stays by transient guests. The building shall be occupied by the owner of the property or the manager of the use. Meals may or may not be provided, but only one common kitchen facility shall exist, and no meals shall be provided to persons other than lodgers or boarders. Lodging and boarding houses shall not include hotels, motels, inns, sorority, fraternity, and cooperative residences, dormitories, or convalescent homes, nursing homes, rest homes, or group residences licensed or regulated by agencies of the Commonwealth. Lodging or boarding houses shall abide by all applicable state and local laws and regulations governing lodging houses, boarding houses, or rooming houses." We have a note that says this draft definition corresponds to definitions in the state law, Chapter 45, Section 2, and as Mr. Crowner stated, existing pieces of our zoning bylaw.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Crowner?
So the definition you read referenced no fewer than four, but, but our zoning subcommittee's recommendation is no fewer than six. Between four and six is already regulated as a supplemental use to residential use, also in the bylaw. We don't see need to duplicate it.
It's shown in red as four on my paper.
Right, we recommend against that.
I see.
You might choose to, you might choose to accept that, but...
Mr. Tucker?
The zoning subcommittee did not have time to review this, but it came up under a separate discussion. The Town Council advises against using the word "commercial" in reference to a residential use. We have previously, you know, defined a single-family residence being rented to a group of unrelated persons as a residential use being operated as a commercial enterprise. And he is advising taking that language out simply because it confuses things, not because it doesn't express a valid opinion, but it confuses things from a legal standpoint. So in this case, I would recommend that you simply strike the word "commercial" in the definition, and simply say a residential use housed in and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Let's take a comment from the public. Mr. Faber? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. As you know, I am not a resident, but I represent somewhere around 500 or more, actually 2,000 or more units in the town of Amherst, including the, if you want me to list, Joneses, Grand Donico, a number of Caymans, Kendrick Properties, which manage single families, et cetera. The concern we have here, and I'm going to try to be very brief given the late hour, is the confusion and the misuse that could be used with this definition the way it exists. The problem that exists, as you know now, there is a number of people in the town who are wanting to use tools, sometimes inappropriately, to try to gain control over misbehavior by people who are not properly handling their properties. We are not suggesting that shouldn't be, but you shouldn't be having tools that are being established and then enabling them to be used inappropriately. In that sense, the problem that exists, and I'm going to get there, is, under your definition in town, you are allowing, we already allow four unrelated people to live in an apartment together. By having it be four people instead of the six or even five, it creates a confusion as to whether apartments will then be included in this definition as to a lodging house, which has a higher level of requirements that go with a lodging house, sprinkler systems, the type of management that goes with it, the, et cetera. I would suggest two changes that would remove that confusion. First would be that you have, instead of no fewer than, either leave it at the six or no fewer than five, if you don't want it, but I would not leave it at four, because that would then create a confusion with your definition for single-family housing structures. The second is, at the end of the second-to-last sentence, which ends with the words "agencies of the Commonwealth," I would add "or apartments where four or less individuals live as a single unit or under a single lease." That takes away the confusion that could exist. What you are hoping would not create confusion in this is that you used the word "sublet lodging in private quarters." But that is not a recognized definition anywhere what that actually means by private quarters. What you, I think, are meaning by "rooming house" and "lodging house" is things that are renting out individual rooms to individuals to reside in, which do not have heating in them, and these people have no connection with each other outside of renting a room in a greater structure. And what I am suggesting would remove that. The other way of dressing it would, if you didn't like the language I just suggested, would be at the end of that same sentence under the, where it says "agency of the Commonwealth," "or apartments occupied by a family as defined by 12.142," which would also be a way, because that is defined in that definition when you accept it, as four or more, four or less unrelated individuals. We are not trying to get around having only four people in a premises, but we are trying to avoid having everything be called a rooming house. I want to, last thing, and I promise I'm stopping, is we've already had these exact arguments with one of the agencies of the town, which is the Fire Department, who is trying to argue that everything basically should fit into that definition at times. And I've actually taken them to, we went to the zoning, the fire, the Sprinkler Review Board of the State on this exact kind of an issue, which we won, but they have still insisting on it. So I'm trying to avoid having that definitional issue be raised where we'd connect, get the town in unwanted litigations that it doesn't want to really have by establishing a definition of what a rooming or lodging house is.
Mr. Tucker?
I think some clarification may be needed. I think the intent, however, here is that we are not ever talking about dwelling units.
I agree. And what I'm trying to do is add the language that would make it clear
Okay.
that it is not a dwelling unit, and it's not just anything that has four unrelated people in it.
Mr. Faber, doesn't changing the number to five solve the problem without adding any additional language?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Tucker?
Part of the reason that it was set at six is currently, as an accessory use, someone can, in their own individual home, whether it's a single-family use, let rooms to, from one to three people by right, or from four to six people, as a bed and breakfast or whatever, through a special permit. So six is kind of a breaking point on this. Many, many, many of definitions for lodging or boarding houses taken, and you can, you all have copies of this from other communities in Massachusetts, actually begin with four, have four as the lower threshold. I think the Subcommittee, as was reported, indicated that it would prefer six over four. So I think that, if the Board agrees, I think that issue is, can be set aside. I actually believe that a different, if I may, let's introduce more confusion here, a different amendment might achieve the same thing, and the amendment would be in the first sentence, "where no fewer than six but not more than 10 unrelated persons are let or sublet lodging in private rooms or other quarters not constituting dwelling units." Would that...
That would probably do it also. I just, our only concern is that we don't want apartments to be accidentally be argued that they are, constitute some sort of a rooming house. There is one last thing, just to throw it in, and why six is often the number used, is under 140, Section 22, the requirement for sprinklers start at six. If there's a rooming house that has six or more people, it has to have a sprinkler system, period. And that's the reason why a lot of definitions start with six. As to Mr. Tucker's statement as to that a number of communities use four, it is true, but they are having more and more litigation over that issue, including the case that came down last year from Worcester, which had three or less. And although it was upheld, it is, it is open to interpretation still to the SJC.
Thank you, Mr. Faber, I think you've made your point. Ms. Ford?
I'm agreeing with all these changes, but I still have a question, and I'm not, I'm just wondering, what was the intent of originally changing it back to four in this?
That was a staff recommendation, not as a recommendation, but as a floated opportunity. We had received an inquiry from someone who wished to acquire a former single-family residence in a relatively new Village Center business district, who wanted to operate a specific building as a lodging or boarding house, but the building was not big enough to accommodate six rooms. As a, they were, they were thinking maybe four. And for purposes of being able to discuss it, we put that in there so that the... And for purposes of being able to discuss it, we put that in there so that the subcommittee could discuss it, which they did, and recommended not going with that. Let me just note, the confusion that Mr. Farber is referring to over which litigation is occurring is actually a consequence of a change in the state building code sometime in the last decade, which required that for more than three rooms, sprinkling, sprinklering is required. And there's still contestation about what that...
Required. Each community can decide.
Oh, each community can decide. So it's a, there's contestation over that question. I think that if we deal with the issue of the fact that these are not in any sense ever intended to be dwelling units that are being let here, the principal objections will go away.
And that is my only concern of being here.
Thank you, Mr. Farber. Mr. O'Connor?
Be brief, please.
Yes, I have specific comments to the content of the bylaw.
I do want to agree that I think it would be useful to encourage landlords who are now renting out rooms in single-family homes to individuals to reconfigure their, and not performing any of the other responsibilities that you do if you run a rooming house, to consider, to encourage those landlords by the way you define a rooming house and so forth, to make leases with enough people to fill the rooms where everyone's on the lease, hopefully less, four or less, but not to be renting out rooms and then wandering into the house unannounced and so forth, and saying that you have a right to be there because it's a rooming house and you're just renting out rooms and you have a right to enter the public's, the non-resident, you know, the place where people don't sleep.
Did you have specific changes?
Yes, and I do have those changes. I would recommend that with regard to the one common kitchen facility that you changed the shall to may, I don't think shall with respect to that use would be a good thing. In this case, I think may would be, would be better. The other two changes I would recommend, simply because I think they're unenforceable and they're, I don't think they're good public policy, is at the end of the first sentence, I would recommend the first sentence end after the word "time" or however it's been rearranged by, as per Mr. Tucker's recommendation, so that the phrase, "and where there are no overnight stays by transient guests." I think, I think that's pretty unenforceable. I know that there is, and with respect to the upper limit, I believe there is a 12-unit rooming house at 51 South Pleasant Street that would be made non-conforming, and that has an apartment in the basement, a separate apartment with cooking facilities and so forth in the basement. And so I don't know if you want to explore that and make sure you don't make this a non-conforming, make that a non-conforming use by the definition. The second thing I would remove, also because I think it's unenforceable, is at the end of the second sentence, where it says, "and no meals shall be provided to persons other than lodgers or boarders." That's also, for those people who live there, they have guests, they have family members who come there, it's just, it's not, that is not, that's not enforceable. It goes to the kind of activities inside the house that I think the zoning bylaw should be silent on, and I would urge you to make those changes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Tucker?
With respect to the last one, I would suggest that it read, "no meals shall be provided by the establishment to persons other than lodgers or boarders." This is really about the use and not about what the individual tenants do or do with their lives. I mean, the use includes the possibility of a separate dwelling unit, although I think it principally considers that for the manager or owner of the property. Point of the meals not being provided to anybody else means it doesn't turn into a restaurant. It's about the use. It's not about whether or not people have guests over. The question of overnight stays by transient guests, again, it means this is not a motel. This is not a hotel. This is not a lodging establishment of that kind. This is a use where people are renting rooms. That doesn't mean that someone can't come and stay overnight if they're a friend or a family member or whatever. What it means is that the person who's letting the room is staying there for longer than a night. It's not a lodging facility. So if there's language that we need to add to clarify that, I'm happy to do that, but I think there's a presumption in the language that's there, much of which is borrowed from any number of other communities, and we'll hear from town council about this, but the presumption is we're talking about the use. We're not talking about what individuals might do. It's what the use does.
Mr. O'Keefe?
I have a couple of quick questions. One is about the number six as a cutoff point. The language says no fewer than six, which is the same as saying six or more. So, and we also said that four to six rooms of this sort are allowed currently under a special permit as an accessory use. So my question is, if you had six rooms, which of those two categories would you fall into? Because six seems to be covered by both of those. They overlap at the number six.
The question would be making a determination between whether or not the six rooms being, it's not six rooms, by the way, it's six people, six. And under this provision, you could have more than two people, more than one person to a room. This is a principal use. The four to six under a special permit is an accessory use. It's an accessory to where the principal use is a single-family residence and somebody is taking in lodgers or boarders. Whereas this is the entire use, the principal use of the property is the lodging or boarding use, not, it's not accessory. We didn't want to make the framework too narrow in terms of the number of potential folks, and I take Mr. O'Connor's comment about the existing provision, or existing lodging or boarding house that has 12, ought about 12, and if the board thinks that that's sufficient, a good number, we can go up to 12. We're a little concerned that the sense of the mass of that would be greater than some people would, could swallow.
So that brings up the second half of my question, which is that if you had something that looked like this but didn't meet these provisions exactly, what would it be called? What use category would it fit in as a principal use? So if I were proposing to build something like this with 12 people in it, or for example, if I had 10 people but I didn't live there myself, so I wasn't owner-occupied, where would that fall into our use category if it's not covered by this?
This does not require owner occupants.
It does, actually.
Yeah, it does.
Well, manager.
Owner or manager.
Owner or manager, yeah.
Well, you can't have 12 unrelated people living together any other way.
Right now, we can't do more than four per dwelling unit, and this is not dwelling units, unless, if you're proposing that the single dwelling use would occupy up to, would accommodate up to 12 people, you couldn't do that outside of...
You just would not be able to do it.
Simply wouldn't be able to do that outside of this use.
That answers my question.
So the idea would be to try and encourage this sort of onsite manager-owner type of boarding house as opposed to the unsupervised houses which we currently have?
And you also have to read this next to the existing use category in the use chart, which has three separate sections that speak to the standards and conditions for that. The first section talks about what's allowed in different zoning districts. The second says, "there shall be no separate cooking facilities." This is existing language. Meals may be provided to lodgers, boarders, roomers, but not to members of the general public, not lodged at the establishment. And again, that's offered by the establishment, not us, offered by somebody who wants you to come over for dinner. And then, "the lodger or manager of the lodging," excuse me, "the owner or manager of the lodging or boarding house shall reside on the premises," period. So that's there already. This is being added as a definition to pull in the rest of the characteristics from state law, from other places where we have no definition now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Rosner?
Regarding boarding, this may be giving away my age or something, but I guess I recall historically houses that had signs out front that said "room and board." And I recall my grandmother actually welcoming in orders for meals. And I guess, I guess I'm satisfied with the language, but I think we're in a sort of a dangerous territory here if we're calling it lodging or boarding house in the title. And then if we're using this language about not providing meals to other than lodgers or boarders, for example, there could be a classification of people who could sign up just for meals.
I think that, if I may, the, we're talking before about instances where you might have more than 10, or where you might be providing meals to people who are coming in. That would fall under a separate use category. It would be a human service use category, one we just added to the bylaw, in fact, a number of, within the last couple of years, as opposed to being a straight private residential use.
Ms. Brester?
I think we're getting confused about two meanings of the word "boarders." And I think in the zoning bylaw, "boarders" means someone who lives and perhaps dines at a certain establishment. And I think there is also maybe a traditional meaning of the word "board," which means to come and eat.
Yeah.
And that would be different from lodging. So you would lodge somewhere and you would also board somewhere. But I think in this bylaw, lodging and boarding is synonymous.
It's combined.
Mr. Schreiber?
So this is a question my daughter asks. It's why are places like Deerfield called boarding schools and not rooming schools, because you get bored at any school at... One of you eat at any school, but I think it's just a flaw in the English language that it's, it's come to mean that you get your meals and you stay there.
But you're satisfied that the definition include, it defines a boarder as one who also lodges?
This is the name of the current use category, lodging or boarding house, and it's the, a use, a title that's used elsewhere. In some cases, it's boarding, lodging, or rooming house, boarding or rooming house. It's all over the map. In this case, it has for a long time, and there is included in your packet a history of the zoning of lodging and boarding in Amherst. That is the title we've had for a very long time. And the presumption has always been, you're letting rooms, you're providing meals, or you're not. You don't necessarily have to, but you're, if you're providing meals, you're providing them just to the people who are lodging there and not to anybody else. That's been the case for a very long time. It's the pattern.
So I'm, I'm actually in favor of this with the change to six. I don't see the need to tweak any of the other language particularly. I think it makes its point, and I don't, I don't think there's going to be any big understandings about what this is trying to get at. I think it's, with respect to Mr. O'Connor's comment, I think that there should be one kitchen. There should be only one kitchen, though. And I don't have any other reservations about this, and I'd be ready to recommend it.
If I may, does that include the changes previously discussed where it would now read, "are let or sublet lodging in private rooms or quarters not constituting dwelling units for definite periods of time, et cetera, and then, and no meals shall be provided by the establishment to persons other than lodgers or boarders?"
I, I just don't see how if you change the number to six, how you need that.
The "by the establishment" part or both?
No, by the, to distinguish it from dwelling units.
I think the intent is to be very clear that these are not dwelling units. These are rooms or quarters which may constitute a sleeping room and a living room or even a bathroom, but not, not a dwelling unit that includes sleeping, living, bathroom, and kitchen.
I'm certainly okay with that language. I just don't think it's needed. If it's, if other people think it should go in there, I'm fine with it. Mr. Rosner?
I'm sorry, it's not related to this. I don't want to interrupt this discussion, but something else? May I?
Let's finish up this particular question first. Does anybody object to having that language put in there?
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. Rosner?
Were you talking, I'm sorry, were you talking about the use classifications? No, because Section 3.329, the use classifications, seems to be in conflict with this new definition now. It says, "there should be no separate cooking facilities, et cetera, et cetera, and meals, lodging, but not to members of the general public, not lodged at the establishment." And above that, in the RVC District, "a lodging or boarding house shall let or sublet no more than a total of seven rooms."
Right.
So you could have six or seven in that district?
Just in that district.
I don't see the concept.
So that's, that's consistent.
It's, well, remember that we're distinguishing between rooms and persons. The definition proposed is talking about the number of people. In that instance, it's talking about the scale by limiting the number of rooms, but it doesn't say how many people occupy each room.
That's a good point, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosner. Do we have a motion on this?
Close the public hearing?
Second.
Sorry, I missed that.
Mr. O'Keefe moved to close the public hearing. Mr. Rosner seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Motion passes unanimously. Any further discussion on the amendment? Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend the lodging and boarding house definition amendment to town meeting.
As amended?
As amended.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'm officially opening and closing the public hearings for...
Continuing or closing?
Continuing. Opening, continuing.
Opening and continuing. I see, I almost got, I almost...
Self-elected to another term as chair.
I'm officially opening and continuing the public hearings for 80613 Single Family Dwelling and 80313 Single Family Dwelling to 705 on October 17.
Single and two?
Yep.
Two, four, eight.
Yep.
At 705?
Yep. I don't, oh, do you need to do that?
I think so, since everybody's here.
All in favor of continuing them? That's unanimous.
But Kathy left.
Except for Kathy. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you very much.
This could set a record.
We're not even going to have a liaison in force.
Oh, yes. We don't care.
Oh, yeah.
What about elections?
Elections.
Can we hear it over breakfast?
Yes, right. We may need to.
That's my recycle pile. The problem was we had doubles.
I do want to make sure.
And I kept finding a double of another thing because...